That looks like a trade-off.
The sound of God.
Let us begin, and we will not ask you to stand. Let's just ask the Lord to bless this meeting. Our God, we thank you for the afternoon, and we thank you for the workshop. We hope many things are accomplished that's pleasing to you and our lives, and it's the right thing for the city. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. This is our, is it, is quarterly? Is it?
Well, it's early this time, so get back on schedule.
This is our work.
Get back on schedule.
Whatever the schedule is, this is our work. And you have any agendas? Anything that anyone would like to add to the agenda that we don't have on here? Okay, then we'll try to do it by the agenda. Dawn is not here, and Rhett is not here, or...
There's some, last I heard, but I don't know.
Steve has to fulfill open duty tonight, and he needs to go first if, since our visitors aren't here as quick as our department is. And Steve, you two...
He's got a quarterly report in your package there, and be right after...
We know that the governor has done some things on mandate. Is everyone good if I don't wear this? I've continued to wear mine.
I'm fully vaccinated, so they say we didn't have to now.
I've continued to wear mine in public, and all for example for my wife's sake. But things I could...
It's right after your agenda, Carol.
We're all good.
John Earl, it's right after your agenda.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hallmark.
Tell us some good news. Well, I mean, we start, you know, January, we started taking applications, and we started practicing, no, February, we started taking applications. March, we started team practicing, got uniforms, and then our official first game was April 12th. We've been doing good, four days a week, until this last week, till the rain started. Rain sort of killed us all. It actually killed us Monday, Tuesday this week. We got canceled the games Monday, Tuesday. End of the season is in a couple more weeks. We have an end of the party June the 5th over at the ballpark. We give trophies and die-ins, and have some lunch in Warcliff, and bounce out. Been doing pretty good. We had eighty-five kids play this year, which that's what we certified for the roster, you know, paid by the county. I don't know, everything's been going pretty good. I mean, it's been a really good season so far. I hate to see it fix an end, but, you know, we still got the Fun Day, since it's over, Fun Day. You know, the Rector Park is in charge of the Fun Day pageant now. I talked to Ms. April Knight. Some of y'all may know her, some may not, but she's real into the pageant scene, and she is going to volunteer her time, and she's going to take control and help us with this pageant so we can get more people and get the word out more so we can have a bigger pageant, and we're just trying to do it locally. And then we're doing, the Rector Park is doing the food and drinks concession for the possum king and queen the night before, and then we're doing the carbonated drinks and all the drinks today of possum day. So hopefully this summer, we can raise a lot of money for the kids, and hopefully by next year, we can get everything we do with grants, with field, over at Rogers, and T-ball field is going to be built over here. So hopefully everything comes together this summer, and we can start doing some projects done. So, any questions?
Of all the Fun Day activities, Fun Day, the Queen Contest, everything, has the venue been changed and settled, or...
Right now, the venue stays the same. It's going to be at the ballpark. They've got a hundred by, a hundred, a hundred by a hundred forty-foot tent. They're going to put up at the ballpark. So it's going to be at the ballpark that Saturday. I do not know where the venue for the King and Queen, for the Possum King and Queen is going to be, but they're having that the night, the night of, as usual, we're having it live, and we're supposed to do the food concession. So I'm kind of taking it's going to be at the ballpark.
As far as I know, it's going to be at the ballpark.
And then the pageant, now, the pageant is going to be in Vernon at the old cafeteria. The City Hall, the old high school, that's where we're going to have the pageant at over there. We've already been approved by Vernon, and they've waived all fees for us.
Oh, wow.
So that's all set already.
Yeah, I think that's what I, I think that's what I, I think I...
Yeah, well, y'all voted on to let it go to Vernon to the benefit of...
I understand, but I thought you just said it's going to all be there.
No, just the pageant.
The beauty pageant. King, Possum King and Queen, this is a kids' beauty pageant.
See, traditionally, they have a beauty pageant, Fun Day beauty pageant the week before.
Yeah, this is the, okay. And the King and Queen will be...
The Possum King will be the same as usual.
I was combining, I was...
No, sir, it's two different pages.
I was calling that the pageant. I know the difference. I just had a, had a brain block there for a moment, but Judy and John Earl, I remember when we used the National Guard tents early on in the history of that, you know, except how hard it would be under a tent on Fun Day.
Well, we have fans too. We have our fans too.
Yeah.
I know where I'm going to be selling the drinks at, I'm definitely going to have a fan.
You remember the coolest year ever was when the real theme was running for, he brought in those porta-airs?
He did.
He had them all over that possum pile. It was, I said, yeah.
That was nice.
You real, you real make sure.
That's the oldest church ever built at that place.
On June the 5th, the, the end of the season banquet or party?
Yes, it'd be a team, too.
That's going to be?
At the park.
At the park.
Yes, sir. So we encourage everyone, y'all, to come up and say hi to the kids, and get a hot dog, and maybe go down to Warcliff.
Yeah, I'll take it. I'd be happy to see it.
Those of you that may have, I may have seen all of your pictures, I'm not sure, but all of you that had the chance to go down to the, to the Easter thing, that was a big, big turnout. That was...
That was a good turnout.
That was good.
It really was.
Really good.
Well, I'm starting with ten thousand eggs that's coming here. I'm starting to buy eggs as we go.
Yeah.
And so, my wife might not like me, but...
Yeah.
Because she stepped off five hours by herself.
I thought that as you said, it was last year, and it had been that I would wait and all the eggs and everything, and I just didn't get their time enough to watch them look, lost and lose. They were, it went pretty quickly that day.
You know, I never expected them to get five thousand eggs that quick.
I thought it would be...
I didn't expect it to turn out that way. That was huge.
And watched it, and watched it.
That was the biggest function turnout that I recall seeing, other than Fun Day, here in Walsall in many, many years.
And that new church has been a blessing, Walsall.
See, I want bicycles. I heard Vernon had bicycles.
Yeah.
I want bicycles next year. I'm going to start getting donations.
And stuff.
They had, they had...
That's all we want to do is save the community.
They have been a very, very good...
And we want to continue to do that.
Just right as that, what, you got any forecast for the next three months, what we do?
Well, we're going to begin with the pageant. Hopefully, this summer, we can, I guess, we can start talking about the park over here.
The rains will start this summer.
Right. So, now Chipley, I go pick, Brock wanted me to wait after the season, and I'm going to go pick up the lights.
Chicago's going to make the ball field loud.
Yeah, so, so it's going to be, it's going to be a pretty big, steady summer for me, but there's a lot of good outcomes at the end of it, so...
Mr. Clayton Owens could help find some contributions of his own.
He's got one, I hear.
He's got five of his lessons now, you know.
That's right. That's right.
He's got a need, so marriage and time.
We need that.
Okay. Football, will you come on track this year?
We won't, until we get our field, we won't be doing, well, Pee-wee's coming back. They will be back, but next year, we're going to do football ourselves, because I should have that field going by next year. And Vernon's starting to play football this summer, but I've got so much stuff to do that I told Timmy, and I said, we'll see how your year goes, and if it goes pretty good, then we may want to play football with them next year. But right now, I mean, I'm packing so practice summer that, you know, we just got so much to do. Next year, it's going to be a big year. We should have, we should have a full program for all year, starting next year. If everything goes planned, we get some fields built and everything else, it should be, it should be a good year next year. It's good to work with them.
All right, anything else?
That's about it. I'll have more next quarterly, because I have all the figures and stuff after the season, but right now, that's all I got.
Going down to a couple of other, it looked like the stands have been pretty cool. I don't know that...
Oh, yeah. We've been doing session stands, and I've already made two big deposits, and still pay our Dutton buyers. So we're making money at session stand, well, the kids are making money at session stand.
Yeah. Anybody got a, got a question for our Rector Park tonight? Anybody on the council have a question?
There won't be sports of any kind going on during summertime.
Football, Pee-wee football for the Dolphins will be going on. They'll be conditioning and practicing for the fall.
Oh, okay.
But that's only sports, actual sports, that'll be going on. And us getting ready to build the fields, and, you know, the pageant coming up, the Fun Day and all that, so that'll be, and the football will be fall, the little Dolphins. And then hopefully we'll have our, hopefully we'll have our possum pile built by the winter time.
What a change world it is to come. When me and John and Judy and Bill was playing Little League, we didn't start the schools out. We played Little League June, July, August. Now it's all local with by June.
When we came out of the academy, we didn't start playing till almost get out of school.
There wasn't as many split families that these kids have got to go to daddies or to mamas for two weeks, you know, and all that in the summer.
If I can find, if I can find...
In the school, in the schools used to run the summer program too. Now it's...
We don't, it's time, getting close to time for baseball on Tuesday and Friday nights, where Mr. Hanson would run us off the field with his falcon dragon to baseball.
Thank you, Steve, for the good work that you're doing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just, I'm just going to say that you did good, Steve, and give me something to do every night.
Hey, I appreciate, I appreciate you and Carol being there every night. They both are there every night.
Yeah, we do, darling.
Does your daughter play, Carol? I hope she don't. No, she wants to. She was too old, but she wants to.
Is there any men's league softball around anywhere?
You know, there's been talk, I've met some of the coaches, talk about wanting to make a coed softball, but does churches, you can do it anymore?
I, shallow with the life, from the...
I mean, we can, I mean, it'd be easy to get, to get one together, but I don't know any churches that do it anymore. I mean, it's like a dime, Rick.
Just if it's a house, we just have men's league, you know, women's.
Two, two, you're the one playing Washington County with shallow and southern look.
I have a shirt back today that I'm paying on.
Hey, I know many guys that signed with the, with the shallow in your softball season.
Yeah.
I see many Christians that play softball.
Mr. Rockdale, I know this thing on the gym, but I keep forgetting, when y'all were talking about the baseball field, I didn't want to bring it up here and make a proposal to y'all, and y'all can talk about it, sir, but the baseball field, you know, I went around, I seen it Vernon, I seen it Chipley, where they honored some of the great men, where they named the field after them. Have we ever thought about doing something like that?
We actually done that.
It's already named.
It's not, it's not a sign, and that's the John B. Glenn Memorial Field.
You know, when you hear...
Thought it was a murder, named that years ago.
What about naming one after Mr. Hanson?
After who?
Mr. Hanson.
Hanson?
Yes, sir.
Vernon has each field that...
Yeah, each is what I'm told, Vernon, and Chipley does.
You know, our T-ball field will be, will be dedicated to the family.
I'll say it's a job.
A kid that played football and died from an accident in Vernon when her mama rolled over the truck. Do you remember him two years ago?
Yeah, I remember him.
Yeah. Now, that's, when I, when I mentioned, when I brought up a couple years ago, with the side of the T-ball field, that's what we was going to name that family field. Now, if we need to make plaques, if we, if the other one, and if the other one's name, I need to get a plaque made so I can put it up there behind Home Place, up there on the fence, so people can see it.
Well, you know, what you get into, and you got into Chipley, I know you got the, you got the Memorial Field, Fiddle Roundtree Stadium, you got the Campbell Stadium, and what we balled and feel, like, you have to hide, line it, name the fence post and everything else to honor somebody. I think these two people may need to, Mr. Hanson may be one, John Emmer Carter might be the, if we got any...
They got the one out here, Roger Sparks, already, John Emmer Carter Field. That's already, that's already getting done.
And as far as signs to hang up there, I'll be glad to check into it, and Mike can just buy them outright and put them up there.
But back to the field research, Mike, with the field research, Mike?
You know what? You're right. I went up to Wolf for a while, I believe, but you're right.
Well, we're trying to make football.
Johnny Carter, Johnny Emmer Carter Field.
Yeah, and Roger's Park.
And I would not have a problem, and the other one after Mr. Hanson, and, and nobody here, except those of us around the table, probably remember him, but if they've seen anybody's heart ever been in...
I mean, he made a huge impact in my life, and many others my age.
Is it all right if I tell him we'll take that under consideration? We couldn't do anything to that?
I'll agenda.
We'd run that around there, what we would think about it and talk about it.
What field are you talking about, Steve, that we don't handle?
Just any field.
We haven't built the T-ball yet. It's, it's in the budget, we got the approval, we haven't built it yet, but we can put the plaque on a big field, and then put a plaque for Mr. Hanson on, on first field, and then we have the T-ball, and then who, who are you talking about on the Rogers Park?
John Emmer Carter's.
Okay, when we build a football and soccer field, we can put a plaque up there and name it that after them, because we're the, we're the softball field, that's, that's going to be a football field. So we can name that after, put a plaque up there for him.
I guess you'd call it the Big Field, the one that...
It's the only field at Rogers Park.
Closer now, no, down here at this...
Oh, the Big Field, y'all, rigid on field.
That's a good...
That's where y'all play, that and y'all work.
That's the John B. Glenn Field.
Yes, we put a plaque right behind the home plate.
If y'all, if y'all do that and get the names, I'll, the banner made up, I'll bet for that myself.
Something else.
The T-ball field, family field.
If y'all like that name, family field.
That's what she likes.
For T-ball. Family field.
Different kind from the...
Yeah, his name's Finland.
The Finland Sheffield.
Yeah, he got that.
We got a pinal ceremony down there when he passed away. It's a ball field.
That kid played here, didn't he?
Yes, well, see, Vernon wouldn't let him play that year.
Vernon Park?
Yeah.
He played in Walsall.
Yeah.
Yeah, Vernon wouldn't let him play, so he came here, and I let him play, and then right after ball season during the summers, in August, allegedly his mother, well, she rolled the truck, and he wasn't seatbelted, and he fell out and got squished. But he was an inspiration to a lot up there at the field. Yeah, he always had a smile on his face and ready to play.
But I would, I would gladly do that for Roger Dale.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not speaking in opposite sense now, but I'd like to, thanks to Walsall, be thankful for Walsall, too.
Does Mr. Hanson, do they have any relatives living at all?
Just, he's got one son still alive, and then all the grandkids of Derwins, I mean, all the Derwins kids, grandkids, the great-grandkids, and I would gladly, I don't know, several, several years ago, we had the banners remade at Vernon, I was in the bootleg club down there, and they make them real nice, you can hang, you know, a real nice for every side of the whole field, and I promise you, if y'all do that, I'll get, I'll pay for them through, them through banners to honor them through men for them fields, because, yeah, Mr. John Emmer was, he was a big impact in my life, Mr. Harvey Hanson, and the other guy, I guess, was a very big impact in y'all's life I don't even remember.
He's the founder of Walsall.
Okay, I knew the name sounded, that sounds fair. I'll, I'll pay for them out of my pocket. Y'all just tell me what size we can get, and we're going to have them made nice, and before she prints them, I'll bring them to y'all and let y'all see them.
Did we want to...
I'm sure she'll give you the good deals. I know the lady down there.
A half later?
It's dead green printing, matter of fact.
Yeah.
That's who would be doing it, Mr. Rockdale is creative printing. They go to our church.
Anything else, Steve?
No, sir, you have any questions for me?
Anybody from the council have a question for our Rick?
Rick?
Yes, sir, you can.
Would I have to take that?
No.
Yes, of course.
Because Dawn is better.
Adam, we're going, we're going to go back and pick up Dawn. That okay with you? I don't know what your schedule is.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I'm...
It's, it's going to be all right? You don't have to have her home by a certain time?
No, she's home.
Okay. Dawn, we're so glad that you're here. We're going to go ahead and let you address us tonight, or talk to us, and I'm not sure how far you have to travel to go home, but I know that you've worked all day, and if you would like to, can everybody here, Dawn's also spoken a little bit, can you hear from where she is? She tends to be closer. However you're comfortable, Dawn, if you can pull your chair up to the corner of the table, if you like, and just be comfortable. For those of you who don't know Dawn, just Dawn McDonald, she's our senior planner for Washington County. She is, she and her staff and, and other departments are the ones who help determine land use...
Justice Chair.
Land use designations and the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. Walsall and three other municipalities, well, all the municipalities, except Chipley, are part of the Washington County Comprehensive Plan, and their, their planning is provided by Washington County. And with that said, talk to us.
It's good to see you all. I haven't been here since fall of 2019. I see some new faces, so...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Carol Weiss, John Watsonham, Judy Carter, Bill Carter.
She made the Charles Park.
Charles Park, you remember Charles Park? That was his dad, who, he served on the council, well, he actually lived before his passing, but he, he's a previous member of the council.
I mean, we work with you all weekly. I mean, Ms. Riley and Jane, we mainly work together on the development review and the day-to-day, but I don't think, I think it was a land use change that we, that we talked to you all about, but, no, we're moved, we're, it's been busy, so we thought we could catch up during the pandemic. No. So Dropbox, email, telephone conversations, meetings, and now we're, now we're trying Zooming, but I don't know, we're just working on that one. So, yeah, so we just continue to be steady, and we're still, you know, improving developments here throughout the county, and we've got several other projects going on. We've got the comp plan update, the Land Development Code update, so if you all have any, any input that you'd like to provide, if there's any interest areas that you want to tell me about, you know, feel free, I think I have some cards, I don't know, then you can email me, Ms. Riley has my email address, but we're just, we're just getting input right now, and the Land Development Code is going to be updated also, and so if there's areas that you would like to see upgraded, updated, you know, just let us know, and we can forward that to the consultants. Right now, they're in the questioning, answering, so they're, I know they're working on things because I get five or six emails a day, you know, verifying things and making sure that this is the way we want to go, and that's the, that's the challenge, is that our plan, the unincorporated county's plan, is you all's plan, so you want to make sure that we have representation and make sure that your needs are being met. So with that, with that said, we also have a comprehensive infrastructure study, where we have some consultants looking at future locations for wastewater and water treatment plants as we grow, and some of the areas we thought should be looked at were near Douglas Ferry Road, and as you know, the Highway Authority on 79, they are extending water and sewer lines southward on 79, and so we anticipate a lot of growth happening there. So that might be an area where we need additional treatment plants or water treat, or water plants. And then another area was Chipley, with Chipley, we're going to be relying on them, and they have a lot of plans to upgrade their system, so as, as we, as that occurs, you know, we've been hearing rumors about Chick-fil-A and things like that, but, and I don't know, I don't know, I haven't heard.
Our TDC at the meeting today, there was no Chick-fil-A.
No, you know Chick-fil-A.
Or about Captain Davis.
No.
They didn't mention that, they just said that they knew for a fact that there was no Chick-fil-A.
That started at the round table at Moses and Skis by there.
But we may...
And that...
We may not, we may not get a Chick-fil-A, but it won't be because we don't serve alcohol. Somebody else might come and go for Dawn, but Chick-fil-A, that didn't stop there.
That's why I was made to stop them.
Yeah.
So with 79, Karen Shaw is our grants coordinator, and she is assisting in a grant that is going to create a design manual, so that whole Highway 79 area will be treated similarly, so they won't have three different standards for the city of Bonneville, for Holmes County, and for Washington County. So that area, that, they call it an intent overlay, but it's really the Highway Authority area, so that area is going to be looked at specifically. So you, you'll have the same requirements for parking and everything else, so that'll be positive. So we've got that going on, we've got the comp plan, Land Development Code, the design manual going on, and what else? Broadband. So we, we talked to Ms. Riley early on, and got the agenda in case we needed to, but the county is going to be establishing an internet network countywide, so it's going to provide service where no service is available, and provide another option for service where maybe other, there are customers that would like another alternate company. So we partnered with WildStar Networks, and they're going to be placing towers in our county properties, but I have to keep saying, it's a, these are proposed properties with potential tower locations. So first, they were looking around, and we thought there was going to be one in town, so their first step was in building the network, and I guess these, I don't know much about this technology, and they spoke at the planning commission meeting on Monday night, and I just didn't quite understand at all, but there's going to be a series of antennas, and the first step would be placing them on high things, so water tower...
They mentioned a water tower.
Right, and so I think that's what they were talking about, but that could be handled with a memorandum of agreement, and you all's permission.
We already signed one in case they need it.
Okay, and that's, that's what they're doing. They're just laying the framework now and getting all the approvals so that they're not held back, because apparently these towers can be constructed pretty quickly. They're more like a flagpole, but in our code, they're towers, and so, and they're really, you know, the places that they're proposing on our properties, some of our properties are not being used, and they're looking at borrow pits, they're looking at fire stations, and I know there's some issues where we don't want to interfere with the helicopters for lifeflight. We can move the towers, we can move it around. Our aviation consultant, Ross, I can't think, I can't remember his last name, he was at the meeting Monday night, and we can paint towers red and white, we can place a strobe light, even though we don't have to, because the towers are 190 feet, so they're under 200 feet. So the FAA, you know, you'd have to register them, but they're not going to interfere with the flight paths. There is one proposed for Greenhead Fire Station also, and we want to make sure we have the proper location, because there's an airstrip behind our property, but fire stations, libraries, the locations they found, you know, there's a clear area, but there's also trees and vegetation, so when residents are calling, we can just tell them, you know, there's going to be a lot of screening, you know, because that's the first question, can we see it from my house? And so we get on the map, and we try to determine whether that's the case, so, so that's happening, and that'll be moving forward, but I think they're going to, they're going to be looking at the existing facilities first, so these towers are just in case they need better So these towers are just in case they need better reception or they have, they need a stronger signal for the internet. But it's going to, they're going to be the provider. The county's not going to be in the internet business. But it's a rural infrastructure grant from the state. It's the same grant that is paying for the infrastructure study, the comp plan update and the land development code update. And then there's just the day to day. It's been busy. We have a lot of people calling from all over the country that want to move here. It's, it's busy.
Is that the same company that's building in Walton County?
Yes, sir. So that, that is, we're only going to be one of three. So they tested the technology in San Jose, California. And we're saying it's innovative. It's new for us, but it's old technology, but it's, but it's being combined with new technology and it's being applied in rural areas. And Walton County is almost live, so. And yeah, they're the same provider. I've been, we've been really working well together. I really like, you know, they're very receptive. Just getting the approvals out of the way will help them move forward, I think. So water tower, okay.
Does anybody have a, a direct question for Dawn now or? One of the reasons we've discussed asking Dawn to come is I serve on the District One representative for the, on the planning commission. And some of, I, I wanted to make sure where those lines are and things like that. You know, there's a couple of things we've had here in town and I had to recuse myself of voting on. But Dawn, one of the things that, that I would ask and, and, and I can ask you in my role at the office sometime is when we reworked the comp plan and the land development code, you were doing it for Ebro, Vernon, Waltsaw, Carriville. When somebody comes to you, if it's inside the city, do they have to come to us and we have to do some approval and then goes back and it goes through two or three steps or where we kind of baton the people around and the applications and things like that? I'm wondering if we might think of some way that we can streamline that? And are there provisions that are sometimes where the city might have a, a, a different opinion or a different desire than what's in the unincorporated area? And you're over here in section three, an item seen and says such and this is the way it's going to be, except in the city of Waltsaw, Ebro, Carriville, Vernon, which has chosen to do it this way. Is that something that could be placed in there? Because right now, land development, except for a couple of things, whatever's going to go on in the surrounding county is what has to go on in the city. We may have, we may have a different need or desire and, and general, we're, and all of it, but we might need one angle to be a little bit different. Is that something that we could address and see?
I think so. But if there's something that would improve process and it would benefit us, you know, we could always update the land development code.
Yeah.
You know, that's, we're able to do that. And this now is the time because the consultants are working on that.
And it isn't happening, our, our town limits are so small, it isn't happening here. I'm, I'm going to guess that maybe even as much as it is in some of the other towns. Carriville may not because when they were bought out, so much of that doesn't belong to people that can't be developed anymore. So there's probably, there, there's probably less than we are. The last meeting was one of the busiest meetings. We had like six applications that were up there for land development changes. And most often in the rural area, it's changing from ag, agricultural, civil culture to low density residential. Because there's some code restrictions that says if a piece of property is a certain size, you can put up to this many homes on it or if it's something else, you can do something else. And, and we've got still lots and we're working them out, but we've still got a lot of places out there that's a half acre or an acre or two acres or three acres. You can't make, you can't make three acre, you, you can't make five acres out of three acres. You can make three acres out of three acres. Make two and a half acres and a half acre. You can do, you can do, but you can't make it bigger. So we're having to do exceptions all the time so that if you've got three acres and you want to put a mobile home on it or build a house on it, you have to come and get permission because it's zoned in the agricultural area, rural area, Green Bay we used to call it. It's out there and, and you would build a house on it, but because you don't have five acres or greater, you have to come get permission to do it. This, there's a little bit of something wrong in my head about having to ask permission for something I've paid taxes on for 30 years or daddy paid taxes on it for a lifetime before dad. And I got to put a house on it, retired, come back home and, and it can't. And, and usually it's not a matter of can't. Usually we have accommodated almost everyone, I think, Dawn. So it's not, it's not that we're turning a lot of it down. But if there's some way that that could be handled in a, in a document that allows the planning officer to say, yes, this meets. Here's the guidelines that text to reduce this, you meet it. And then they go on without them having to. Right now they have to post a sign, have to advertise in the newspaper, paper, all that, and then have to meet with the planning commission if they choose to meet. Sometimes they just have Dawn presented, but there's a lot there that's prevention thing. So that's one of the things that I'm suggesting in my head as a planning commissioner. The other thing I think that we wanted to hear from you, and this I think has become so important to us and it's going to get worse, is the use of travel trailers, mobile homes, campers, whatever, well, mobile home and camper, camper travel trailer, I don't say. Where they can be placed and how long can anyone live in, in those or motor homes or some things like that? Now, I know probably two years ago, we did some things with motor homes because some of those things are like cost more than most of our houses.
Some of the travel trailers, the campers.
Million dollar deals and people that stay on the road and they live on them and not, not just all apart, but a lot of people is, is mobile anymore. So we, we addressed that about stay so long and so many months and things like that. But we're pickles and trying to make it a permanent and we've had to deal with it recently. And I don't guess we've got anything that's like, well, we may have one, but could you?
Anything in here.
Could you?
I'll press that in a minute.
Okay. Can you, can you help us on that? And again, I'm asking you to do it. I'm asking you to do it. Well, and if you don't have it, maybe you could do some, I'm asking you to do that as opposed to me playing two roles.
No, no, and that, now see, that's something that would, would help us because we get that call not every day, every other day. Although the other day I got two questions I had, well, can I live in an RV and can I, can I dig an outhouse on my property too? Because, you know, we, we don't allow permanent use. It's temporary. You'd have to use your generator and you have to get a pump out station. So I was, I thought, I thought it was a joke. I thought, what? Is this person actually calling me? They're going to dig, dig a hole? And that's the problem that we were facing is these were not meant to be, no matter how many people argue and scream and, and yell, they're not meant to be lived in permanently. Our building official has a lot of heartburn over this because of security. And every hurricane season, our emergency operations department is, is nervous because we, we don't know if they're anchored. We don't know who's out there. We don't know who's using them. We know some, if, if they're building a home, they can temporarily live in an RV. But that's tied to a building permit. But otherwise, yeah, I, I see it's trending now and we're getting retirees, we're getting younger people, but there's a lot of residents out there living in RVs and they don't have sewage, they don't have water, they don't have garbage collection. So that, in that case, any language would be welcome and I would be very pleased to submit that as far as the land development code update. We need to do that now.
I don't know. The land development, I had Dawn retired at that time on the council and had been sometime since I'd worked with land development. But when Nancy's mother was sick, her sister was permitted to put a, I think like a little two room or a little travel trailer, it was longest from here to Paul or maybe even for, I think we said six to nine days. And I don't remember, I don't remember if that was something the city was permitted to do or if it was addressed, then that's been 10 years ago or something like that. So I'm, I'm not sure how, how that comes about.
I'm pretty sure that's by the home ordinance.
Okay. But we're not, we're not talking about somebody who's building a home and they can get permission like you said. We're talking about somebody who comes in and sets up on a lot and sets up housekeeping. They, they move in and live, live there. And, and, and part of, part of what this is, some of you remember Mr. Harold Gany. And before, before the, this was as well as it evolved to where it is now. There was a person, when Mr. Gany was the building inspector, he put an electrical permit, $10 for electrical permit in Quail Hollow. And when Mr. Gany went to inspect it, he was living in a double stall horse trailer. He had an electrical pole that was wired and met specifications. He had a quad plug inside, he plugged in a coffee pot, a fan and a television. And he was living in that double stall house trailer. Because this developer had advertised no codes back to, you know, this is Mother Earth magazine, it used to be around in the early eighties. And he sold lots and lots of lots and no development code. And what began to happen was because they didn't have stores that were using outside facilities and things like that, the health department, not this same case, but another case, the health department actually removed some children out of the home, one thing or another, and some of these things began to develop and, and the codes got improved or got, and all of that. But some of what we've dealt with here, you got to have, you got to have approved power codes and things like that. You can't plug in, you can't plug in an extension cord in.
That way you know, that, that's been going on here for so long. And it, it ain't, you don't live in a perfect world anymore. It would be perfect for none of that to be in here, the honest we.
Yeah.
But you don't have it. It's in Chipley, it's in Carriville, it's in Alfred, it's everywhere. You know, and so I, I don't think the council should be held responsible to that. Something like, we need something higher than, than Waltsaw to set them rules that, you know, we wouldn't be held, you know, any mess, you know? And I don't know what the county statutes are on that.
But I think it's what she said towards him that, that we're under the challenge. I'm not suggesting that we, that we did this in any regard, open the fact that we are under that.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. You know, we need some, something that's above us, you know, that, that would, you just say, no, it ain't allowed. You can let that be here and.
Oh, they don't give that so easily.
No, I know they don't. You know, I know. It's a job to do it, you know?
But now it, RV parks, you know, you can live in an RV in an RV park for up to six months in our code. But when it comes to private property, well, yeah, you could use an RV on your property and if you're going to be there for holidays or weekends, you clean up your property, you could live there. But even if you have electrical septic tank, but what's been happening is the applicants will, they, they'll request power pole addresses, septic tank for the RV and we don't, we only approve that with a built, with something built, you know, a structure or building.
I was hearing Waltsaw, they're already existing, there's existing water meters, you know, in the ground, there's existing power poles already at most of the places because someone had lived there in a local quarter or something, and it's just.
And then they just pull, pull one in and.
Yeah, they do, they do. And that's what I'm saying, that, you know, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be, but it is. I mean, they people living in Waltsaw, they don't even have septic tanks, okay? You know, to, that would cut up to the code, what I'm talking about. They, they just don't.
And, and with some of these, unless they have the water cut off or the electricity cut off, they keep on being, we're being electric bill. The electric can be, as long as they get their bill, they don't come out here and see if they see anybody out there. They.
That's right.
So one pulls out, another one pulls in, plugs in. And you could stop them if there was a way that, I mean, you might could stop them and maybe do something. But those are some things that I think we'd like to see the code address and, and I, I think, I think that I said something in error on the council. Margaret has, Margaret has corrected me, I think. But at one time, those four municipalities were paying for planning services. It costs us $2,000 a year. And we continued to pay that for years and years after every other municipality stopped.
Till David Corbin was in there.
And when David Corbin, Mr. Corbin, a previous county administrator, he said, nobody else is going to pay, y'all don't have to either. I, I don't think you get out of a, I don't think you get out of an agreement that easy, but, but we have paid for probably two years.
Two years.
Two years. But, but we're prepared.
Dawn sends us the invoice every year to.
Yeah. We've always gone and billed the department and we've always sent a check. And, and I think it's an error on the Department of County with building us and keep on working for us. You may not do much for us, but we don't have a lot of demand, but $2,000 is probably a bargaining we want to get in the future.
And the county's starting to get the grants for the, you know, the rural infrastructure grants and it didn't cause the county, you know, other than, you know, so I don't know why we stopped getting the invoices, but.
Yeah.
Well, that's the, yeah, that's the benefit of the comp plan update, that that money is through the grant and so that's just going to assist everybody. And we wouldn't have been able to update the plan without, without those funds.
But I think if you talk to Mr. Massey about that and, and you enforced us for our share.
We'll pay.
We'll, we would pay that, yeah.
Yeah, this is the first I've really heard of it. There really is, there aren't a lot of records, but I think Jane that works with me found, found some.
Hard I just go, yeah.
Yeah. Feel called, could call Johnny or, or Rishi in the clerk's office that can, that can look at those ice bunches and tell you.
Well, and I can understand, you know, because Carriville, I haven't really assisted them much. Doesn't seem like we've done much together. So, I mean, it really is as you need it.
I guess that Vernon is a bigger user of the cities, maybe us, it may be us, but not, because we've got so much rental property, I don't, I don't know. They just go and come and, and don't cut off things.
I do the daily, you know, the daily, the weekly approvals and things like that. So that, that continues. We've been in more coordination. It depends. I mean, we've had some properties in Vernon that were for sale, so we had quite a bit of activity. And so there's going to be development going in there. Still don't know what for sure, but.
And right around Vernon, they've been about three or four RV parks has been questioned recently between, between Vernon and Shaleen and that, that are they been in RV parks right and left?
Yeah, it's come, it's come.
Do you have, do you have any questions or concerns that you'd like to address to, to the planner?
I don't have anything right now.
Ms. Carter?
No.
Ms. Carter?
Thank you for your information.
Just basically.
I don't know enough to ask you, okay?
Basically, how does it, how does the steps work as far as like with campers, that people are just coming in and out? Or that has just went and put one on a lot and even though they had power there and there was already a septic tank? How do, how do you take the step of, do you, I mean, do they just stay or what happens?
So if someone is building a building or a home, we, we have a form, we have an affidavit they sign and we revise it and we've given expiration date, six months so they can live there temporarily. It's really helped a lot of individuals, because there's still some partnerships out there.
Yeah.
And then there's some people, they don't, they don't want to live in an RV and unfortunately that's where they are right now. Through a code case recently, we were able to assist. And there's a gentleman, he just was having difficulty working with his home, the home block company. And so they, he found another company to help him and they helped him with financing and, and everything. And he, he doesn't want to live in an RV, but that's what he was faced with. And so we won't know until. And so, we won't know, with a lot of these residents, they'll, they'll be there, we'll never hear from, you know, about them. So if they're not in our office, unfortunately, they may have the neighbors call code enforcement, and that's how we find out. And they know somebody's living there, and there's concerns, or there's garbage, or sewage coming out, so it could be a code case. But you're right, how would we know if anybody just moved an RV unless the neighbors call us?
I think the code violations is what we've dealt with up here, especially the one down the street here. And when the people, when the neighbors come here and make them, they're complaining, and we say, go see the, uh, planning department, or go see the health department again. They, they've come to where they're supposed to come to, they think they voted for us to take care of the things in Wausau. We're sending them someplace else, and, and they probably don't like that, because most folks don't know, I've been complaining neighbor, whatever reason, they don't go someplace else. But, uh, when it comes to code enforcement, if we were, if we were able to, uh, that's, that's been slow for us to get. Am I, is that any better, it's been?
We got one case that's closed, and we got an invoice from Washington County on it for, um, one thousand fourteen dollars and thirty nine cents.
Would you, Brett, Brett asked me to bring the invoice to you. No, not an, not an additional, but I think, yeah, maybe you all need it.
We need to come?
Yeah, I think.
Because this is recheck.
Yeah, this is, I think it was, it was in the year.
Because our order says, the population of Wausau is three hundred eighty-three. We divide that by the county, and then we, you know, budget. And that gives us our sixty-four plus certified mail, seven eight five oh eight. But on one seven of twenty twenty-one, it says, this is the board property. Says a recheck, Inspector Joe's property free of litter, unoccupied RV, pictures taken and uploaded to a case file. Voluntary compliance, place closed. I don't know that that'll need to be rechecked again.
This is your end of the list.
Yes, sir, we gotta write your orders. The twenty second, do you have enough?
So, so it really is code cases, but this is the, the difficulty for Ms. Brunner, our new code enforcement officer. She's very thorough, and she really works with, with, um, folks. She, what we're faced with is we, how do we track? So, somebody, if she shows up on a code violation, they say, oh, no, I'm not staying here permanently, I'm just, you know, temporary. So she's, she goes back to, is it in two weeks? Well, the RV might be gone, the, the people living in the RV can just drive away and then drive back. So there's really no way to track, you know, how long people are staying. And they could say, well, I'm not, this is just temporary, I'm just here for the weekend. Um, and the only rea, the only other way we know would be if they call.
Uh, Ms. Palmer called this one again, and then I didn't get any, it was a call.
This is the easiest way to, you're the government of the government services.
Yes, sir, on your interlocal agreement number five, municipalities shall pay under Washington County a neutral amount to its population divided by the population of the county times the budget cost of the code enforcement budget of the county. In addition, the municipal municipalities shall pay to the county is out of pocket expenses for prosecution or any matter brought to the county. Out of pocket expenses shall be deemed to be cost of certified mail, advertising, special master's fee, and private service fees.
And I think the cost is really the special magistrate. And I think with Ms. Brunner, she's very, once the cases are filed and, you know, people make complaints, she follows up. And so the idea with her in any code enforcement, she's gonna try to resolve the issue, so it doesn't go to that extent. Unfortunately, there's some cases that are going to have to go to the special magistrate. And that's because the, you know, the applicants are unable to address the issues, or they don't want to. But, um, yeah, and if, and if you all need to, you know, u- update or change your interlocal agreement, is Jeff, is Jeff Mr. Carter still your attorney? He could, he could talk to Mr. Massey directly, and, and they could.
This was, it's the same as Vernon, everybody else that entered today and all over the agreement at that day has the same. Interlocal agreement does change for Wausau.
See, that goes back to what I was saying earlier, we were paying two thousand dollars to get services. Then you quit billing us, and now you're gonna bill us, and if we have, we have five or six services in a year, it's gonna be much more than two thousand dollars all along. If we've been paid and had any, any parts, we will have a little credit there maybe, but, uh, now, now we're billing, what'd you say?
Seven, well, it's seven eight five oh eight now.
Well, okay. So we could get free, we should get free for that with our two thousand dollars.
I just wanna make our way, because interlocal agreement is in effect. We call these code enforcements in, we will pay. So, you know, they won't pay, the city will pay.
So like the one that Ms. Palmer called in?
This is the board, yes, this one we're paying seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and eight cents. Uh, which is, you know, it needed to be done, the guys that assisted living that, it was a, but he had his septic, he had that quarter, he had no anything, you know? It was just a sad case.
Actually had a water meter on the property that was lost. They couldn't, they couldn't get into the, and I love, love things.
But, but that's one, and that's another thing that, um, that Ms. Brunner talked to me about, since I told her that I'd be here tonight, is that the interlocal also guides you all in how the complaints.
They have to come through the clerk's office, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, so every complaint, you can't just call in, it has to be directed through you all. So, and I think that's a good idea, because then you all know what's happening. And, um, Ms. Brunner can, Ms. Riley.
I got any packets tonight to take with y'all, they're in, and the interlocal. You know, that's what I thought of Brett about, I said, they need to know, you know, I said, they need to enter these agreements. And our attorney said, oh, yes, that's a good agreement, enter into it. But we got to know that there was, every time we called for a piece of trash we picked up out of yard, code enforcement would come down, because the yard is dirty. If we can't handle that ourselves, we need to do that, but we need to also know there's a cost involved in that, it's gonna cost the city in the long run.
Right, and, and Ms. Brunner's not driving around looking for cases?
No.
She, she, she's so busy, and she's only one person, like all of us, we're all busy working. And so she is going to be responding to complaints and calls. So, we drive by things every day, it bother us. Well, she, she's not going to follow up on those until there's a complaint. So she, you know, she wanted to let you know about that too, is that, yeah, so the guiding, you know, so that you all know. And Ms. Riley is the, is going to make sure that Ms. Brunner knows about the complaints. And Ms. Brunner also wanted me to let you know, we're keeping an eye on the legislative updates that, from the Board of Legislature. And there's a Senate Bill sixty. It's a proposed bill, and we're, we're, we're just gonna keep, um, visiting the governor's site to make sure you see what he signed. Because there's a few other things that would benefit us, especially the planning. But the Senate Bill sixty, that is not going to, now this from the committee on rules, they do an excellent job summarizing bills, but, um. What it is going to do is, is going to prohibit county and municipal code inspectors from initiating an investigation into vile actions based upon an anonymous complaint. So. She just wanted me to let you all know about that. So that's gonna change, that's gonna change a lot, is that gonna increase complaints, is it gonna decrease complaints?
Anonymous complaints, it'll probably decrease, and if they can't do a lot of that.
Right, so, um, it also requires that an individual making a complaint of a potential violation provide his or her name and address to the local government body before an investigation may occur.
So we can't get out of doing that, can we?
So, so, all right, so any complaint is gonna require, I guess, what we require public noticing, you know, public meetings, you know, name, address. So that's something to look out for now, he hasn't signed it yet. And for us, for planning, we're looking at the governor signing a bill that would help us. It's gonna increase the acreage for small scale amendments from twenty to, don't quote me, but it's quite a substantial increase. I think that would, um, Mr. Hagan, help us a lot too with our land use changes. There's a bill that increases the. But, yeah, there's, there's a bill we're watching, twenty twenty-five, and it, um, it's gonna increase the small scales from twenty acres or less to, I think, eighty or less in, in rural areas and rural opportunity areas like us.
And some of the things we're hearing, it's not just, it's not just in planning, it's in every facet of life now. Some things we're hearing makes it more and more important for us to make sure that our league representative or if we get those notices on, write the governor, write the legislature, something like that, we do, because whatever they pass over there, they don't take into account how big our pocketbook is, they, they pass it, and we pay it. Anything else, Dawn, for us?
No, um, the code update, I can talk to the consultants, I mean, we're sending emails back every day, so we can, we've told them that this is a huge issue for us with RVs, we get calls all the time. And, um.
Is this the same as like, is it the same situation like the trailer that's down there on the corner that the lady passed away? That nobody lives there now? How, how do we go about, you know, trying to get that, is that the same?
Now, we would forward it to the county, through the office, to the county, and then Brett would come out and look at it.
And that would cost, that would cost a ton. Well, we ain't gonna win on that. So you might as well, you know, you ain't gonna win on that.
If we, if we're going to try to prevent the overgrown laws and the accumulation of junk and abandoned things and all like that, we getting, we getting asked all the time, can we clean it up town? We, we can clean it up as much as we can afford.
Yeah.
And we can, you know, we can probably start with letters from us, letters from our attorney before, and see if they would do it voluntarily before we turn it over to the county.
That has happened.
It has happened a few times, especially Jeff said, well, it gets a little bit of a tinge to it.
Yeah, probably make out.
And what we may do is ask them to readdress our ordinance or readdress the interlocal, well, the interlocal agreement, that's just between us and the county. Readdress the ordinance that if we have to do this, and it costs us anything, we recapture or put a lien against the, against the properties, except if it's homesteaded.
You got like that?
That don't show any good, I mean, that's why I, that's why I do it.
Well, we appreciate you coming, Dawn, and invite you to come, anytime that you would, or anytime that you have something to share with us. And there may be times that the council would like to, just invite you back and give a, an update on where we are. And I will try to do that some as well from time to time in our meeting, but, um, this way we get your, from, from the here.
There's, there is more than a new Boston stone. The twenty second, we're gonna have the, who is it gonna be? The kids.
Yeah, the, um, that's your, that's your lane.
Well, you're part of it.
The boy scouts, isn't it?
So, the, um, the Wausau Fire Station received a Division of Forestry grant for trees and land, you know, trees.
Well, let me catch my, part of the CO to, for that building is the landscaping. So, we didn't have any money in our budget for landscaping, so, um, Ms. Dawn stepped up and really went to bat for us and got us a three thousand dollar grant from forestry to pay for the plants. And we also got trees donated, uh, that's sitting out front right now, there's twenty-one trees out front, larger trees. So that three thousand dollars is gonna cover our plants and the mulch and stuff like that. So on the twenty second, we're having a planting day that morning from eight to twelve.
My mom's lying there.
So if you wanna come dig a hole, you're more than welcome.
I was coming out of Chippewa this morning with a hundred and twenty feet of half, inch and a half high, and those forest trucks passed me in a construction zone, and they was headed to Wausau.
There's seven of these trees laying down.
Yeah, they're laying down because they won't stand up, the pots, they're just rambling it off on the bottom. I went over there, tried to stand them up, but, um.
Yeah, I did too, but it didn't work.
I might can find a block or something and.
That should be okay, unless they get blown around, you know?
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, that's what's gonna happen on the twenty second, so, um, on the twenty second, the fire department will be using the backhoe to plant those trees. And, um, and we may try, being we have an operator at, at that point, try to dress that dish line right here at the bottom.
Yeah.
We can get some dirt, dress our possum monument pond over here, they filled it up there, and it's, it has flooded there the last two rains. It's, it's all up to the concrete on Possum Monument. Cause it's like, we need to.
We got some spare dirt laying around?
We'll find some.
Okay.
Why don't you just call it the Possum Pool and make lemonade out of lemons?
Well, to dress that bottom, I don't know if we have any commercial material back here or not, but we're gonna need some. We're gonna need, police need a load.
Of?
Uh, asphalt, granite asphalt.
You know, that's a thousand dollar load right now?
Not, I guess, Travis shouldn't be charging that.
I think not, Travis might not, I'll see what he uses for it.
Just see what it do, I mean, but we, we're gonna need something to line out that bottom.
I think God's doing that, a big deal load.
I remember these, oh, I nearly give it.
One twenty-five, you know?
Yeah.
Dawn, we do appreciate you helping the fire department, I appreciate you mentioning that, because I'd forgotten, I knew that you told us that she was involved in this all the time.
Oh, she, we could have gotten this done without Miss Dawn.
Mike is our forester, Mike Claxon, and he had the grant, and he completed it in a week. And, um, Ms. Brunner, the code enforcement officer, she works with the four H livestock group over at, um, the extension office. So they needed a project, so they wanted to plant trees, so.
It all worked out.
So, yeah, um, but it would help.
I mean, all the thing is, it's gonna cost us is some, move on, go around and water these trees by hand, because there's no irrigation, so, that's what we gotta do.
So now we're looking for shrubs to fill in the gaps, so, and that's gonna happen.
Well, thank you again for coming, and feel free to come to any of our meetings, and, uh, if we can, from the town, if we can do anything to assist you in the development. All right, Mr. Smith, since you have, since you have joined us, now, now.
It's way, way down in just a little bit of life.
Please, please go ahead and tell us how well thanks we're doing with you.
Um, right now, everything's going good, uh, this is our quarterly report that y'all have asked us to generate, and, um, me and Sam collaborated on it, and this is what we come up with. So, um, if this is good with the council, what we're gonna do is, uh, basically use this as a template and update it as we go. If y'all have any thing you would like us to add or put in it, you know, we'd be happy to consider, look at it, see what we can do better. As far as, uh, we've had nine calls, uh, five outside of our district, or five inside of our district, four outside of our district, and then there's, you know, uh, two structure fires, three brush fires, uh, three accidents, and one road obstruction in the past three months, so it's been very quiet, which is a good thing, you know, so. We got about fifteen good active members right now, that's, that's very consistent. Right now Dylan is in class, he's Sam's son, he is a full-time volunteer now, and he's actually one of our top attending members at this point in time, he's doing a good job, and, uh, we're very proud of him. Let's see. As far as our vehicles, the, remember with last working group, we requested money to buy a pump? The pump got put on backorder for the tanker, so it's supposed to ship on the twentieth, and we should have it within a week from that, is what the guy was saying, telling me. So that's the best we can do, but we got a really good deal on a very, very expensive pump. So it's, it's a good...
They're not good deals.
Yes, we, we got a really good, it cost us some time because we could've got a cheaper pump here faster, but we got a very good pump for, that's gonna last several, several years. As far as our needs or issues, we're still looking at the flooring for the department over there. Still don't know how we're gonna afford it yet, we're looking. And the brush truck has an extreme transmission leak, it's on its last leg. We're hoping to do something, maybe I can find a used one, we're looking, I don't know what our options is, but it's got an extreme transmission leak and it's gonna burn up. We're doing the best we can, we're feeding it as we go. It's going through probably a gallon transmission fluid a week, it's that extreme. But it's getting the job done from what we can, it, it's getting us from A to B.
Don't pour, don't pour the concrete.
And that's why we need the money for that flooring, that's exactly why we need the money for that flooring. If we can get that floor epoxy, then we don't have to...
With the TDC, do they do any thing on that, do they do grants or nothing?
They were for tourists.
Basically, what we fell short on that, the big USDA rural grant, is the fact that they don't pay for anything permanent. Furniture and stuff like that is not considered a permanent fixture to a building, so the flooring will be considered a permanent fixture. They're even covering the generator, which we, which, thank God, that's an eighty thousand dollar, so, so that's cool. But as far as the flooring, we've got, we've still got an issue. I mean, we're gonna do, we're doing what we can, I just don't know where that money's gonna come from, ain't gonna click. But I don't wanna run that concrete. Once we get some, it ain't coming up, it's there forever. I thought you...
I wish you found me.
I wish, I wish.
Anybody got a question for Mr. Smith or for the fire department?
There's some grants somewhere we can get for flooring.
We're looking, there may be some, somewhere, you know, we're, we're looking, but I haven't found anything yet, you know? We just need a donor to come in, we've got seven thousand dollars in dock.
Sometimes over the years, there's grants, they're cyclical, and when you have a town where you got an economy like we've had the last two years, grants seem to drive them away for the times they got money, they're just looking for somebody to get it, to just stop on that roof and hand it out, just about it. But we're, we're probably not that near the time right now, they ain't handing out much.
Well, the money is in the epoxy, that's, that itself is twelve thousand dollars. But that covers the bays and the outrooms completely and seals that concrete. It's like, maybe ten thousand, I can't remember, and then the inside was, I think, five grand. I mean, worse comes to worse, we may have to go in there and just be flooring guys for a day, I don't know. You know, if we can, if we can, if I can find something that'll cover it, that looks nice for maybe a dollar square that we can afford, we might get in there and maybe we cut it in and do it, I don't know. I can't lay epoxy, I don't know how, but...
You just roll it on, if you, certain types of it, there's a commercial job just happened on the other side of Chipley that they, they installed it themselves, and as long as it's clean and prepped, it's not a problem, so.
Yeah, we don't have money to buy it.
No, I get it.
You see what I mean, I mean, that's, that's just...
Well, as you look for grants, you need leads and you need to, if, sometimes they have to be applied in the name of the government entity or, if you get, if you find one, you need us to hit you, I think we'd all agree that we'd do that.
Sure, and, and I'm looking, I just don't know what that is just yet. Another thing I checked in on was, see, I checked with the state floor that there was anything to cover solar panels for that building, you know, possibly to cover the electricity bill more than anything. Because I'm kinda concerned, Dawn, you know, there's a lot of lights out there, they're LED, the whole building's LED. I don't know, I don't know what our lot bill's gonna look like. You know, I mean, we might have to go over there and just cut some lights off, I don't know. But they, what I'm saying they offer is a tax write-off, basically, which covers like thirty-five percent. So it, it ain't worth doing in general, so...
So, you know, Adam, there wouldn't be nothing wrong with cutting the lights off when they're not in use, would it?
Honestly, no.
I don't either.
You know, I mean, there's lights all over, all around the side of that building that I don't think's necessary, but they're streetlights, that's just the same thing, they're all LED, so that will cut the power down way down.
Yeah, I, I don't see nothing worth it just coming when it ain't used.
Rooms inside, a lot of them are motion sensor, so when you walk in, and they say that we can adjust the time of how long it stays on when you walk out, so we're gonna look at our rooms, you know, and see, we're gonna cut them back as much as possible to keep our power going.
Well, that'd be smart to do that, yeah.
That's where we're at right now.
Ms. Weiss, any questions, Ms. Wolfman, Ms. Corrigan? That, I thought I'd, I'd live with a old man from Y.C.
I like that.
I like that.
I do.
That, that looks good.
Yeah, it does.
I mentioned to Mr. Smith and Mr. Root when we did the walkthrough the other day that as we go forward, got a new building, hope we got a new image or, or our image is being recovered, and looking at the, looking at the budget, we're not signing checks and things like that. Just something to think about, I don't even care if, next quarter or something like that, and I don't know, the board may not care about it at all, but fire trucks and avenues is one made for MPGs, they, you don't, you don't get thirty miles to the gallon. But could you help us keep up with a mileage reading between Phillips on our trucks and things like that?
I think it would be easy to do it like I used to do when I was a consultant, when, we'd write the mileage on the ticket and turn it into Margaret and she'd put it on a...
That'd be great, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'd be good at that.
We don't have that problem now, but there has been problems where some fire departments have had these things about, all that fuel didn't go in a truck, it went in, it went in cans, and then the cans went...
Now, we do have can, we do fill up cans every once in a while, but it is for our pumps and stuff like that, it's, that's...
I understand that, and you can just write that on our pump gas or something like that, but the problems we had was, was the, the cans going to...
Cans go in the cars.
Go in someplace.
I don't know how everybody else knows it, I know when I take the trucks over to get gas, I put on the ticket engine or brush or, you know, I didn't put mileage, but, you know...
If you, if we can do the mileage, I think that'd help us a lot, yes ma'am?
I know I'm not part of that, but when I worked for the state, every, every vehicle had a book, had a little book in there, and it was a mileage book.
Yep.
And then when you, when the person got in it to go somewhere, they wrote the mileage. When the person, when they got gas, it was written down, it was written, how much it was, and when they got out of it, they wrote the mileage. And it was signed by the person, I mean, if, if you're looking for a way for accountability, that's accountability. I mean, that's not, that's not why I'm here, it's not my business, but if you're asking, that was pretty easy.
That's what I was pushing to do in weed, every, every stop I made, I lived all of a sudden, went five places.
Well, there was a, you know, the book that went to the car, it was like a, you know, like a folder.
I think they do.
And it was a vehicle log, and it was logged every time somebody got in it, and that was the cover there.
I think what you said would, would work, would cause somebody to sign those tickets too, yeah.
We'll put the vehicle and the, and the mileage on the, on the ticket that we should look.
Thank you, and, and you asked for anything we'd like, I, I can't actually, what the average number of people shows, and I know that's...
It's in there.
It is?
Yeah.
I see the number of...
Turn, first page, first one, members. Currently, it says consistently active.
They talk about the number that show up to each call.
Oh, the number that shows up to each call?
Yeah, we got fifteen, but ain't, ain't but three or five.
Oh, that'd be on our run reports, I mean, sometimes it'd be two, sometimes it'd be all fifteen, who knows? It's hard to say, that'd be on our...
I'd like to, you're, you're right, you don't know, you don't know, but I'd like to, for a while.
Okay.
If we, if we got fifteen, so we got fifteen, so we're gonna buy fifteen jackets, we're gonna buy fifteen cats, we're gonna buy fifteen everything else, but five people going to the fire department, it's the same five all the time. Sometimes we'd save some money, them that ain't showing up or anything.
Well, that's what we did with the jackets, you know, and y'all was kind enough to purchase those jackets, everybody had a good one.
Yeah, I, I know.
Yeah, the, and when we buy bunker gear, the first ones to get new bunker gear is the ones that actually shows up and uses the bunker gear, you know, so that's, that's the same idea.
How, I'd like to ask one, how many people do you need, Adam, what would you say?
How many people do we need?
Yeah, how many people that would be sufficient to run the fire department the way it should run? In your opinion?
At minimum, ten at any point in time.
Any ten?
Any ten at any point in time, we can get, we can do the job.
Okay.
I mean, we've done the job with two.
Did the D.C.F.A., especially because of the offender form, or did they say that that twenty was...
We can have twenty on our roster, yes, we can have twenty on our roster, what's gonna show up ain't gonna be twenty because people work, we're volunteers. You know, I mean, but you go to any North Walton County Fire Department at any point in time, there's two people sitting there. You know, Ms. Judy can verify that, Jasper's one of them, you know, so. And two people start a fire, you know, they'll be the first two to arrive, but there's a battalion coming behind them, you know?
I didn't know, I was just...
I do appreciate you coming, I do appreciate the new format.
Sure.
I do appreciate the new format, and, and I know you're tweaking this, the needs presented, so you'll recognize them before we did probably, but I do appreciate the new format, it's very readable and it's informative.
Sure.
Anything else for us?
No, I don't, unless y'all wanna give me seventeen thousand dollars. Blowing right past you.
We'll be looking, dealing, with you, we'll be searching with you. Thank, thank you for coming, we'll see you next quarter, or before if you, if you choose to come. Okay, where are we now?
Hey, it's my turn, but I got a couple things I wanna address before, Ms. Tamara Tather's here, well, she would discover a lot of church. They have approached the DOT about buying their property, getting the property next to them, that's, with the DOT's place, you know? And what they're wanting to ask the city is if we would send them, when they send their land, send a letter of support, supporting the expansion of the church from the city.
There's one between church and DOT.
They might be, that's the one they want, they, what the one it is, is that though?
It used to be the Mercer Cox.
I don't know.
Also, also water system.
This is a lot, sort of, okay. This is the south, I don't know, Tamara, that y'all looking at?
I think that they, that we were told that the, the south side on the Chipley side was gonna be a holding pond, but then there's a lot that's next to, what it is, is we are, well, Sunday we had people parking in the street, even though the whole back, what grass that we had back there was filled up, and then we have people parking in the street. And I mean, we're not even a year into, and I was just thinking if y'all could, I mean, it's not necessary, but it would look good for us when we go to write the letter to Mr. Young. If we could have the city's support as far as city beautification, you know, what we've done with the property as far as the beautification, as far as the community's support, where the church has been aiding in all things Wausau that's going in in Wausau. Also, we've been, a food distribution, we've been approached by a church in, a Catholic church in Panama City that wanted to use our facilities one day a month to distribute food, and that's just around here to the needy in this area. So we're just running out of room already, and we would just like to have the city's support behind us, you know, as far as trying to, that, that doesn't mean, you know, that, that they're gonna O.P.A. us. Ms. Lynn Gothor called ahead of me this morning, she called and talked to the man, Mr. Young, at DOT, I asked her, would she do that? He said that we needed a letter on, a letterhead from our church, which, that's not a problem, we're gonna do that in an email and in a letter form. But I was just thinking, you know, that we have been working with the city, and I mean, you know how nice that it looks, you know? If the city would support us in trying to, you know, they're not gonna do anything until the road is done. That's what he informed Lynn, when he told us, he said they're not gonna make any decisions about the property until everything is finished, but we don't wanna be on a back end of the list, we want, since we're already there, we wanna be at the top of the list, and I'm sure y'all that we will, I mean, you know, Mac, that whatever it will be will be all in good taste, and it will be, whatever it will be will be good for the community.
The piece of property, you know where the, you probably remember where Nate's at, Carter League? That's, Ms. DOT is his place.
Okay.
And the piece of property, she's talking about is that wooded lot between there and the church.
And the Methodist church.
It's a small, it's a small piece of property, probably a hundred feet wide or something. Mr. Mercer Cox, he had a way with our, for Wausau had a water system, and lots of folks looked on to that way.
Yeah, it's a lot that's in between the Methodist church and our church, it's just, it's a lot. I mean, it's empty, it's just wooded, you know, I don't know what's ever been there or if there was a house there or what.
No, no.
But, you know...
The school, the school used to be over there.
Well, listen, Mac has talked about putting us a Christian school, I mean, he has plans, but we, we need space. So we already have teachers, I mean, you know, we wanna do what God wants us to do, but we need the property. So we just would like to have the city, a letter from the city supporting us.
Is that all right, put this on the agenda for next Thursday, put this on the agenda?
We'll put it on the agenda for next Thursday, Tammy. All right, and I, we have, I'm, I'm going to Thursday night meeting, so I'll try to be here next Thursday before the meeting. I don't know what time y'all will discuss that, but we have six thirty church, my whole family's there. I appreciate y'all's time, though, thank you, Ms. Margaret, for bringing that, thank you, Ms. Judy. I love you guys, I hope y'all have a great night.
Thank you.
And we appreciate any and all consideration, you know, we just think it would look good as far as helping us to make to attain that. We don't even know if we can afford it, wooded, complex area. Thank you, guys. Also, I'd like to agenda for next week, Delancey, we'll be able to discuss. Okay, my record, y'all asked for the Delancey files every quarter?
Do you see those?
I would like to, yeah, they... It's not, I should not, just for y'all to take with you and bring back next week.
You, you'll first say them?
Say them first.
Okay, and, and any particular order?
That doesn't matter.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay.
You have your job description, so make it easier for you.
You're welcome.
We're supposed to, maybe, and we're...
I didn't know you prepared a folder? Yes.
Oh, I brought this paper.
I'll bring mine with me.
Oh, bring mine with you, there you are, very bad.
Very bad.
Very bad.
Good for you.
How poor you are.
Uh, like, minus.
Job description. This week, we appreciate you coming tonight, appreciate your interest in the in the vacancy for the town of Walsall, and have you read the job description?
No, you haven't.
No.
Okay, okay, well, uh, we can, uh, we can furnish you with one, or I can, what is it, Captain, do you want to do? Okay, do that. Mr. Shanks, if you think you got a description?
No, they can't do.
No, sir.
Why don't we?
Oh, gentlemen, sir.
Why don't we go?
I'll have one of those. I'll have one of those job descriptions.
I'll make a copy of it.
Okay.
All right.
We'll let you be reading that while we.
I'll I'll read it.
Okay.
I think, uh, most, all of my review of murder except for you and Judy that are being combined here.
Hey, if you had a chance to.
Yes.
Forget it, okay?
All right.
Did you see anything on those you can't do?
Actually, yes, on page two, number six, it's preferred, not saying I had to, prefer permanent residence in the town of Walsall.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That one I.
What about, what about the work elements? Did you see anything?
Worked fine.
Okay. Well, we'll, uh, counsel, we can, uh, we can take turns and ask questions, or we can just kind of, any, find, anybody jump in here for you? If anybody's got some questions, let's, uh, let's go with that.
Marvin, on number five, on that check inquiry daily?
That's no longer a factor.
That's no longer a danger.
That's a lot on this, uh, I have my some lights out there, what we don't do anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Very bad. Uh, we don't, no longer the cemetery, we no longer both the, uh.
Check inquiries, no?
No.
One of, one of our biggest, uh, services and and lots of attention to is is our water service, Miss Royal Service. Have you got experience with municipal water systems, or?
Yes or no? Uh, I worked with Jim Smith at High Plumbing for actually ten years, and, uh, it was all residential, you know, commercial jobs we did. We we always went from the meter to the house or residence, or it's doing some tap-ins. I haven't done that, but, you know, it's almost anything plumbing wise, I can do.
Okay.
I've been to your house several times, Mr. Corbin and I, and, you know, so plumbing's not a problem. The only weakness I actually have is electrical. I'm not real good at it, but I can do, you know, the basics though.
I mean, our electrical would be a chain to plug out or something.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
I love to call electrician.
Where are you currently working at now?
I'm self-employed. I have a lawn care service I've been doing for about eight years going on now, um. I'm getting to the point that this has benefits, what I do doesn't. Everything I do depends on me each morning, you know, parking up, going to work and having work. And it's not a real problem, but I'm just getting to the point I'm getting tired of it. Having to, every summer trying to go through and find help, that's extremely difficult. And I wind up doing it myself, which I do, I don't know. So, yeah, um, this is something I've I heard about, so I thought I would, uh, just give it a try.
Mr. Williams, do you have a habit of being functional, or is do you?
I'm on time before.
You're on time?
Yes, sir, I'm there before time.
You're self-motivated?
Very much.
You said?
Basically, to where if you called out to a job, you don't have to worry about somebody watching or making sure that you're doing what you need to be doing.
No, ma'am. You just tell me what you need done, and we get it done.
How's your, how's your record keeping schedules? Daily, daily worksheets, uh?
That's not too much of a problem. As far as, I have to do basic bookkeeping with my log as far as, uh, mileage and gas receipts. Uh, and then all I just turn all that in with my bookkeeper, so I don't, that's about as far I get apart doing logs. We used to do that when I worked at State Park every day, so that's not a problem. I worked the office, all the field worker, I was there twelve years, so even did the law enforcement inside our park, so, yeah, all that was not a problem. Any kind of equipment, biscuit wheels and a motor, I could pretty much from. Chainsaw, anything outside, I can do.
Keeping maintenance logs open or changed and services was done to their vehicles?
Yes.
Keeping up with materials that's used on a project and, uh, uh, we do, I I hope we continue to do, uh, besides those things that you show up every day and you see to do that you do, the moment that these things like this, uh, we get requests, or maybe we'll make a request of you that we'd like some attention on a certain place, and a driveway, for instance, after a rain, I'd like to know, uh, uh, how much metal asphalt you put on it, how much dirt you put on it, how long particularly on the job, or something like that. Are are those kinds of things that you're skilled at doing?
Yes, sir, we had to do that, and I ponder, in fact, we kept a material of what I used on the job, parts, parts. We had to call in for prices, we had to keep up with all of that, and then turn in the daily log sheet, what we did each day on, on jobs to add up for our our work hours.
If you use ten feet of pipe or a hundred feet of pipe, keep a record of it?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Yes.
Looking at your, at your, uh, application, it looks like that you, uh, have a pretty good record of staying with a job, uh, thirteen years, ten years, eleven years. The van was was two years, but all the others that related to the construction industry, like we're talking about, you seem to have a pretty good work history.
And you live on Peanut Road?
Yes, sir. Just north down the town on two thirty-one.
Yeah.
What about maintenance on these back ends, stuff like that? I I don't know nothing about.
About. Checkers, greasing it, checking all the basic stuff like that every time before you use it, and when you get through, rinse it off.
Do you know how to use it?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Porch, you can be a big assistance on those mechanical things, I'm sure, uh, from time to time.
Maybe.
Yeah.
And, uh, your, uh, your self-employment, is that gonna go away if you obtain this job here?
Most of it will, yes, sir, because some of them are my big jobs to where, like getting this as a full-time job, you know, I would like to cut away from some of those just because of the expense of of having them with, um, you know, with liability insurance, workman's comp and all that stuff I have. And, uh, if I get this full-time, I'll just keep the basics and I can, my residential yard.
Saturday night hours.
Saturday night hours.
Is that, well, it'd be Friday to Saturday is when I do most of those, you know, like my church, I do every Friday, and, uh, big church in town, I do every other Friday, so they're ready for Sunday morning.
I liked Mr. Watson's question a while ago about self-motivation or how much direct supervision you need. One of the things I'd like to see happen, if you become our maintenance person, is that our our building represents our town, and when it's got, when it's got weeds or trees head high and the flower beds out front and the mail views all over the door, and we've got a pressure washer setting around in the bag, and I'm being used, something like that. I kinda like to make sure that you know that I would expect for you to see that, that I'd have been pointed out to you and do something about it.
Things that I see like that that needs done, do I need to refer to Miss Margaret or someone to get their approval to just say, this is what, you know, what do you think? This needs done, and if so.
What I think is that, what I think is that's part of maintenance, and you go over to see it and do it.
Okay.
If you, if that has to be pointed out to you, then will it have to point out to you both right away?
Right, right.
The rash and those things like that, they, I I don't.
So the maintenance.
I don't want such a schedule.
Right.
I I don't, I don't know how to handle it.
I didn't know how far, who I need to ask for to get permission to do what with, or who, you know, tells me what to do everyone.
And I'm asking now to make sure that we all agree still, that Margaret is his, she's the closest thing to a city administrator with all the, she's a court administrator. And and our maintenance people have always responded or answered to her, is that way, is that way we approach this deal, or are we changing any things that's gonna still be? So she will be your first point of contact.
Okay.
You know, uh, we we aren't supposed to have a lot of authority outside of sitting at a table together. Our our authority is a joint authority. That doesn't mean we couldn't say, uh, are you William or Gregory?
Gregory.
Gregory. May I call you Gregory?
Sure.
Okay, I I, that doesn't mean that would, cause sometimes in Gregory, uh, the driveway and then the full street, uh, somebody knocked down the stop sign and broken in the car, or did something like that. Any of us could call you and say, would you take a look at that when you come in in the morning or something like that? I I don't mean that we wouldn't do that, maybe pointed out to you something we're aware of, but I don't come in, I don't want the middle one says, you'll vote Jackson Street on Monday, you'll vote Jefferson Street on Tuesday, and you'll vote Second Avenue on Thursday, something like that, that you, I want somebody that's able to set their own schedule.
Okay.
Or see what needs to be done and do it.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I have to do now, Bart, with my work. Uh, the only thing messing me up on my work is the weather, like the rain, and that just puts me behind, which puts me behind means I gotta work that much harder to get caught up. And once in a while, it makes me have to work a Sunday, but, um.
And because some issues revolve around you, if you got questions, we're not thinking about it now, so.
I'm thinking about the water pumps, the water.
The wells?
The wells.
That's a good, that's a good question.
Does he know anything about work? Do you know anything about working on on wells that we have here?
A little bit. Basically, what we did was change that one to the pressure switch, um, that was the base. I even took and replaced the the tanks before and hooked up new tanks. Other than that, at the State Park, we, the wells, cause it was public drinking water, we did have to test it, uh, I think weekly and do a raw sample and take it to the health department. That was just for the basic flooring kit. I'm not quite sure when you're saying wells, um, you talking the big ones or just residential?
We don't have residential, we have big wells, but our operators require to be on site. Anytime you mess with one of those wells, he has to be there.
Okay.
Or anytime we have a leak, even a minor leak, he has to be on site.
Okay.
Per new D E P rule.
No, ma'am, I I haven't dealt with anything like that, so.
What are any of our pace, what's what's been the limit of any of our maintenance people in terms of working on those wells? Do we do it in-house? We do a lot of?
We do that.
We have to call in somebody?
We have to call in somebody.
Be good that we could have somebody.
Most of, you know, we can reset a switch, we can, um, you know, if it gets past Mr. Regis' experience, you know, we but, you know, we do have to do, go reset a generator, reset a fuse, or change a fuse out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, other than that, you know, if there's a leak, you know, you're the, the worker, Ms. Regis will stand up there and tell you what to do and how to do it, but you have to do the work.
Okay.
What, well, and I know it's workshop, but, you know, he's he's about eighty-two, eighty-three years old. How, how, what's, how can you get us somebody to go to school, did like a recreation, you know, he had a maintenance man, how can you get him to go to school?
You can't in our small town.
You can? Okay, I just.
We don't have enough, it's my understanding from rural water, from D E P.
Yeah.
You have to have so much on-site training, and that means you're at that well, that eight hours a day. The ones that can get that done is the ones that, um, you know, work in a bigger, uh, entity.
Okay.
Mr. Regis says it would take six to eight years for us to get somebody qualified to.
To what he does?
To get, sir.
Good.
It's the license behind it, it's not the actual.
Well, that.
That's what it knows, and that's what it.
Well, I read the, so, okay, okay.
The law rule changed on that.
Right, right. Yeah, we're, we're.
Sure has, cause I used to do that with a forestry. I I did all that testing of them wells and the cap track. Well, I mean, I wasn't licensed and none of that stuff, but we just had a little kit we did.
Yeah, we can't use those.
Yeah, they probably outdated by now, you know, that's been a long time ago.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I just want to ask a question.
Is it, we tried sending David to school, but Ms. Regis said it would not be feasible, you know, to.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know. Okay, I'm, I'm.
Does any, I'm sure the Chippy does, because they, they're a big plant over there. Does one of them have a full time, or do they contract?
Jimmy Cook still does there?
Jimmy Cook, by contract?
By contract.
Yeah.
This is just, it's just not feasible for the small maintenance companies to, unless you can have one that's already a certain guy who wants to come, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I didn't know, but I read that's where we got workshops, you could find that.
Well, sure, yeah. I've always done interviews for two-way streets. Do you have questions for us?
No, sir. Uh, this is first interview I've done, and I couldn't say I was thirty-plus years, so this is very nervous for me.
How are you with, how are you with, how are you with people?
Pretty good.
You think you got five bosses. According to this, according to this name I got a lot ago, you got three hundred and eighty-three.
I did what?
So you're talking about the population.
A lot of my relatives.
You got three hundred and eighty-three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Well, I don't know more than you know.
We got a small town, too.
How how are you with people? How are you in, uh, crisis situation or or hustle environments?
Good, until it gets physical, we don't cross that line.
We don't cross it either.
They have to cross it. I won't cross it.
Yeah.
But with people, I don't have a problem. I like people. I'm a little nervous at first, but, I mean, just a little time to get around here, and then we're fine.
There will be a certain amount of, for lack of a better word, abuse that you'll face, uh, mad people when the water's off and you don't have a car and whatever, some things like that. Uh, it's always been my opinion that I employees don't have to be cursed at or or physically assaulted, but you will, and it's some people who wants to talk loud and. but you will, and it's some people who wants to talk loud and... The best thing, the best thing goes, I do it for a few minutes and then it gets to the full where it's escalating to that, you need to report to Margaret, once you've had to leave the side and some things like that.
I've had some experiences of that nature with the apartments that I deal in town, on North End of Town. I've been first, I mean, well, several times, but different, only one or two, and usually they're, I just say, I figure they're off their mansion, they need to be on their mansion, most of them are over. There, and, but when, I take it the first time, but I let the manager and Ms. Nell know and at that point, it's up to her to take care of it, so it doesn't happen to me again. When it happens to me again, I still take it, but, and then it's, the third time, I don't take it. And that's only happened once, and then him and I were like friends, friends, and I still do the apartments for nine years. So, and people, I let them, just let them express their anger or whatever, because I might be just the one coming along at the wrong time.
Mostly that's all we are.
Yeah, they just need to, someone needs to let it all go.
Where do you see yourself ten years from now?
Ten years from now? Well, sitting in a boat fishing. I mean, I work, we are in the dirt now.
That's right.
But at that point, I hope not to be working, if I'm still healthy enough and everything's fine. I'm fifty-nine now and I don't feel like there's any slowing down, but we'll see when I get ten years and ask them that question, then I'll still be here.
I hope we're still here, darling.
I will, I will tell you probably the best consistent full-time person we ever had was probably close to eighty, when he left us, Al.
Ten.
Al is probably as good as we've ever had.
Bad.
And he, and he moved out, he moved away, is the only reason he left us then. He, of course, he was very healthy and lost some things like that, so I don't think he denied disqualification at all.
No, I'll still be here, as long as my health takes care of me, you know, I'm fine. I worked most everybody that's ever worked under me, and I'm talking about eighteen and thirty-seven-year-old kids, men that they can't hang, and I'm fifty-nine and I look at them, I don't understand, I know it's hot and you're sweaty, but... They, I, they, they have a choice, I don't, I look at, I don't have, I have to get up every morning to go to work, I have a family and responsibilities. That's what I go through, what my type of work behind, and that's why most of the time, I do my jobs by myself. And I have enough work to, it works me six to seven days a week, non-stop, so, and I like to get to where I can have my son made back.
Hang on, where are they?
Okay.
Are we going to, we'll discuss later, let's try to do that.
Okay. You've been talked to about the salary?
Yes, sir.
Starting salary, probation period, drug and alcohol tests and all those things, it's pre-employed requirements. And we, I don't think we've talked about this in council, I think probably Margaret has maybe talked to each one of us about it, we may need to put it on the agenda to discuss it next week, or we, we still want to be looking at forty hours a week? That's, that's what we've got now with David, or had with David, had with Jimbo, had with Helen, had with Al, has everybody that works here, or we're gonna continue to do five days a week.
I got a suggestion, since Margaret's here, Monday through Thursday, we should do just thirty-two hours a week? Unless someone comes up on Friday that we need to stall them in, you know? It's a suggestion, something we'll look into.
But is it a thirty-two hour a week job or is it a forty hour a week job?
We have two.
Does it take him forty hours to get everything done or can he do it thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
We took the cemetery out, we took the parks off, all that's to mow now is the city hall here.
And he will still get his benefits at thirty-two hours?
At thirty-two hours, all we have is, all there is to mow is the city hall here, the sidewalks to and from George Rogers Park, and the C Streets.
And you can operate a weed eater, right?
Oh, yes.
You can, in the...
I've got two zero turns.
And it's very...
Weed eaters and...
And well, that's been a little...
Backhoe excavator ditch bottom and...
Yeah.
I haven't done one, but, um, it wouldn't take me long to figure it out.
I've kinda liked Judy about, is it thirty-two or forty? I suspect with this kind of job, it's every day. I mean, when you get to on Friday, it's not like you've done the job this week and it's over with you and you go somewhere else next week, you just, you just start over, so it's probably six days a week or seven days a week or something like that. But, or, I think, the question is, are we gonna get done enough to make the town look good in thirty-two versus forty hours?
We should, we should have said she brought the cemetery out and everything.
And then what, we don't have the, what, seventy-seven doesn't have to be mowed or pioneered?
I know it's... Except for the sidewalks to George Rogers Park, they have to be mowed.
So see, that's a lot less mowing that has to be took care of there.
Well, you can, you can mow it far more in a couple of days, really, I think, you know? But, you know, if there will find go, you know?
And, and of course, what, of course, what I'm concerned about is, do you recognize next to me that we got some trees and, and we got the street, the ditch and the back slippers, and I gave it a right away, good way over here. And we mowed, we mowed just a small street next to the pavement and you got everything growing up, hanging over and things like that, coming off the backside of that ditch. I'd like to think that you would recognize that and...
I have, well, what I do with my work, when I see that, I'll stench the trim and saw them. I just cut, there's anything that's touching, where I, affecting me with my mower or anything, stuff like that, you see it, you know, I'm just grabbing pole saw and knock it down and wherever we need to take the limbs through the disposal.
So thirty-two hours a week wouldn't bother you?
I'm not sure how small the check would actually be, just when you asked me if it would bother me.
Well, I mean, the...
I don't feel like straight up, so that's why when you ask me a question, I'll, I'll give you the straight answer, but... It would give me enough, I would have enough days still, perhaps Friday and Saturday, to do a lot of my extra work, so make up any...
Yeah, well, I just, that was just a question.
Yeah.
You have, you don't have a problem being no call in a week?
No. It's just my wife and I, so we're, you know, we've just got a dog and two little kittens, we have a dog.
Gross the difference, what's your doing, what's your number to take with you?
A hundred and twelve a week.
Yeah, gross is, is the difference of a hundred and twelve dollars between thirty-two hours and forty hours. And, and if I was somewhere he's at, I'd be concerned about the size of the chickens well. Since where we are, we can butcher and things like that. And to compromise, who's gonna let some large jobs go, this may let you actually keep some if we went to thirty-two hours and may let you keep some of your Friday, generally, generally where you could do some of your order. I don't know what your income needs are and your budget, your personal budget, I don't need to know that, but, but these are things you need to consider, whether, whether you can make it with thirty-two hours or forty hours.
Yes, I can make it without, with the time that I have, I'll let go of the apartments. Those are the only ones I have to have workman's comp and, and that costs me a lot every month. The liability insurance, regardless of how many, what kind of work I do, and I have it. By letting those go, it's, I save money.
Comp costs us a lot, fixing costs us a lot, motor... You're familiar with the benefits?
Not really.
Yeah, I told him, we get twelve days a year, annual leave, twelve days a year sick leave. We get twelve holidays a year, we get, um...
You don't work for about three weeks here.
Insurance, and we get, uh, lower retirement.
And that would take no bites for life.
That would take bites for life.
We would just maybe get kicked.
What is that, what is it?
We do have insurance, we pay on the employee and people's family, he pays the family. And sort of retirement, which you make...
Three percent.
And we put in, what, twelve percent or...
Uh, ten percent or...
Ten.
Ten, not now.
Yeah, so, so that's, you had to work six years to be vested with a part of retirement, so of course, you probably got, you probably got some time from the state.
Yeah, ten, back when I was ten, and tonight as well, we've got a little time on that.
Yeah. Anybody else got a question? You have anything else for us?
No, sir.
And what happens from here, I think, what happens from here, we agenda this for next Thursday night at our regular meeting, this is a workshop, we can't take action except to put something on the agenda or delete it all. So what happens from here is this will go on our agenda for next Thursday evening, I applaud, and we will hopefully be able to make a decision then, and we'll notify you as quickly as we do.
Okay.
Thank you for coming, thank you, sir, I could have, I could have taken...
Thank you, guys. God, good evening.
You're thank you.
Just leave that there. Thank you.
When you talk about, okay, we, you come out, once you're working, hang?
Do you see it?
Yeah, it's the...
That's a bro.
I said bro. Jakey, yeah. Mr. Sacks?
Yeah, yes. Hello, everybody, I'm really not that important, I mean, if you all would have to come today. But, how you doing tonight? I looked over, you know, all these things, they're pretty general now, I don't know what it is that you want out of the maintenance of the vehicles, other than the oil, check the fluids and stuff like that and make sure there's no valves flying off or whatever. I mean, and mostly it's pretty general, I never did any top-hole work, but I suppose I could find out now. So, I'm really just looking for just not forty hours a week, something to maintain, keep up. I'm general plumbing, general electric, jack-of-all-trades, been in it most of my life. Home and animal, I worked for a college for about a year, doing groundskeep and inside maintenance and... I, I'm really just looking for general maintenance, kinda almost scared me, I almost went out the door because I don't know what you're, what you're looking for there, is a, is a supervisory type of overall, you know, run. But, I mean, I was in the Air Force and I did mechanics there and I did the paperwork and all that kinda stuff. I suppose I wouldn't be able to know unless I really did, did the job to see what did all that entail. I mean, but I don't want to take up too much of your time. But if you have any questions, you know, please go ahead and ask. My, my application's not really all that thorough as the last five years, so I, I haven't really, I'm kinda like self-inflicted retired. So, I really haven't worked since two thousand and eighteen, that was out of Amazon back in Virginia. Where my wife and I kinda military retired, so, you know, I'm, she wants me out of the house and I'm just looking for something to do, so...
Got her open right?
You know, general, general maintenance and maintain, I'm not looking for... Two and D, I'm sorry. But, you know, I'm not looking too much involved in taking care of whole.
Probably, you've probably heard most of our conversation with Mr. Williams.
Yes, I did, and I almost did, I almost went out the door.
If you just answer all those questions, we ask him, we can... Make it shorter.
Okay.
Well, how do you feel about working thirty-two hours a week, you don't want...
That's, that's fine, believe me, I don't want forty, I, I don't need forty, less is better.
Maintenance, regular maintenance, if you're retired from the military, you feel that every kind of form that they are, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Getting out daily worksheets.
Yeah, yeah, you keep it kinda...
One piece.
Parts and, you know, locations.
That's not bad.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, paperwork now, keeping up with paperwork, all paperwork, that could be a problem, I'm not a paperwork person, I'm a hands...
He is.
Hands-on type person, it's a quick form, you know, with lines on it. Now, if you, if you require more, I could do that, I used to do parts inventory for, for, for an airline, so if you require more, I can do it, but...
Our forms are very simple, demonstrate to do it.
But, but, please, I would...
I question that at this point.
My handwriting. So, if you gotta type, if it's a computer, I can do that, print it out, that's good.
Yeah.
You know, handwriting is horrible, so, no reports, please, no, no spreadsheets, please, you know? I would have to pull on my wife and then she would wanna get paid and then I made up.
Yeah. But the, the things we talked about, maintenance, the checking the flues and the bales and those kinds of things are, they're the first things that... I, I don't know that I can do that, I tried to find the oil flue for my wife's golf cart yesterday and I had to call my nephew who works on those things and say, hey, when you find this thing out?
I had never seen too many preachers that did.
Didn't know anything, didn't know anything.
No, I'm kidding you now.
You're making excuses now.
Right in the heart, I mean, right in the heart.
I was almost gonna leave before these interviews and I'm glad that we stayed.
I'll never fail.
If I was ever, I'd say the same thing.
I, I'm kidding you.
You know, hey, I know some old preachers and I... Oh, my goodness.
What church is this, I'm over here just in one church.
Samuel Goddard.
Oh, you're Samuel Goddard preacher?
Uh, a preacher? Uh, no.
Somebody had said it now.
No, I said, I'm just like...
Oh, Roger, yeah, oh, yeah, I knew he would, you know?
No, I wouldn't attempt that trade. I don't have the patience for preachers.
And we appreciate, and, and I may be a little surprised that we only had two, but I do appreciate most of you that would look at our town and maybe consider even working for us. As I always, we're looking for...
If you need help, my helper.
Okay.
So, if you need help...
I'd be interested, I'd be interested in your opinion, how you're the best person for our job. What about, what about you is gonna make me glad that I hired you a year from now?
On time, every time, if not early. I do diligence in everything I do and I work hard at what I do and I do the best I can do and... And there's nobody else in the world, I don't think you're gonna get better than the quality of work that comes out of me. If I don't get it right the first time, I'll keep doing it until it gets done right.
Now, you don't even need, it saved, you don't even need the insurance to...
No, no, we're retired.
You wouldn't be interested in that.
No, we're retired.
That would save the, the city money, why, Margaret?
Yes, sir.
Am I correct?
One question, our worst job that we have is if we have a water leak.
Right.
Our pipes are probably four to six foot deep in the ground at times. We got a backhoe to dig them out, but you do have to get in that hole and you do have to patch that line.
Oh, I'm good at digging, I don't know if I know backhoe, but I'm good at digging.
But it has, it has to be done at night, at thirty-six... But it has, it has to be done at night at thirty-six degrees.
I'm not used. That's, I'm good at that. I'm, I'm due diligence. You call that phone up, I'm there.
Mr. Williams, the same thing, but calls pipes and regularly breaking the winter and at night.
We have very few. We have very few, but we do have them occasionally. We have a new system, but we do have occasional.
Yeah, manual labor's not a problem for me. I'm, I do it all the time. Well, I shouldn't say fifty-nine, but I'm fifty-nine.
You think, well, both of y'all are same age.
Oh.
One of the things that would be also would apply to Mr. Williams is we're, we're, we're anticipating in the next three years, this widening to come through here and so much might have to work with our...
Really? They're gonna widen this route here?
So much might have to work with our contractors and D U T and everything else about moving some water system that's on them.
I'm sorry, you can have all that traffic going through town?
But it's safe to do all that, isn't it?
I suppose so, but we have to be on side.
Somebody have to be on side.
Yeah, we don't have to do that. We have to coordinate with them.
Yeah, okay.
And have to learn the system and even know where you're gonna cut off how it is and never cross, cross the place and things like that.
Even if you want to put a few hours, you know, to help one of the other gentleman that you hired or something, that's fine too. Give me hope, you know, I can do that too, you know, uh, not every day, maybe every other day. I could do that. I'm a good assistant. Born and bred.
Okay. Mr. Porkey, thank you.
Uh, no, I'm...
Ms. Carter?
How do you know Andrea Locke and Tim Hoag?
Oh, friends from a long time ago. Uh, fifteen years ago, my wife and I came here fifteen years ago because she worked at a Panama City as a recruiter. And, uh, we, uh, I think there's a church gathering we met. And, uh, and we were friends ever since. We kind of got out of contact when we left because we had to leave because my wife was stationed. Uh, we came back and, you know, we've been, uh, since, I came back here in two thousand and eighteen and we've been friends ever since.
Are you crafting only?
No, no, no.
You wanna be though, right?
Yes, yeah.
That's reading here, right?
That's why I'm here. I mean, I told you I was made out of the door. I mean, I stopped. I, I heard you all talking. I stayed. I stayed at night, you know, but, you know. I got a little frightened. I, I thought maybe you were looking for something that was, you know, out of the general maintenance field. So, but I don't do backhoes. I don't do big, huge equipment or any of that, you know. I, I could, I, you know, could put my hands and I learn quick and then any information that I do have to know, I look it up. You know, if parts are needed, I, I look them up. I look what it is. You get what I mean? Um, self-reliance.
Any other questions, Mr. Williams?
No.
Do you have questions for us? I think it's, uh, I think you...
What was the payment again?
Fourteen dollars.
Fourteen dollars.
You go to probation and, uh, and we generally give raises every October at the beginning of the year.
And then the probation.
And then the probation.
Oh, fourteen dollars a woman, huh?
I'm wondering that was COVID, you know?
Why would you put it down so?
Wait a minute now. We're talking about nineteen ninety-two. But I was doing copier work then, high-tech work, seven dollars an hour. I guess Vegas can't be choosy, you know?
I'll take it.
You just gotta buy lunch every day. That'd be fine.
Well, we appreciate you taking the time to come and fill out the application and come and be with us and, and interview us. But again, we will agenda a decision for this for next Thursday evening and whatever, whatever the board's decision is, Mr. Morgan will be in touch with you.
I appreciate all having me in. Give me that.
Enjoy your laughter, okay?
Thanks again. Have a good night.
We need to discuss these job descriptions and they all need to be revised. That may be at a future workshop.
And we may need to see what we're gonna carry forward from now. We, uh, I can tell you I'm more impressed with the first interview than it was the second. I'm more entertained by the second than it was the first.
If you can't use a backhoe, you're in trouble.
If you can't use a backhoe?
We in trouble.
You just can't preference preference, but, but...
I don't care. We not fall.
I don't, yeah, this is, he was qualified. So I guess I'm asking, because we didn't discuss this previously, do we, do we just agenda this as maintenance hiring? I know we'll make a decision on that, or if we, or do we just carry one application forward and, and do it then? I don't, I don't know that I think we can carry one application forward because everyone could make a decision now.
Yeah, we just agenda it for the, maybe to make a decision.
Yeah.
That's, that'll be Thursday, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And this employee, by the time he goes through the, uh, pre-screening and all that, we don't wanna hire an employee and give him a holiday the first day. June first would be their minimum, uh, the minimum start date, you know, June first.
June the fir?
June first, yes.
Yeah. If we heard, um, I guess, just ask.
Now, is there an approvation area?
Six months.
Six months.
I mean... Which we only got two people that, you know. Is, does he have enough of, I guess I'm just thinking in the back of my mind, has he got enough of experience? And if not, who could help, you know, who could show him if he don't, you know, like...
The water system, the mischery shows everybody.
That, you know, can he what, do all the equipment and all that? That's...
That way he can get...
He, he seems to have more experience than what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Sacks is gonna have a lot of life experience. He's gonna, he's gonna be, he's, it don't say here what his specialty in the military was, but he's gonna have lots of experience. Did it say that? Maybe, but I see where it says landscape and then, and lawn maintenance, but...
Aerial craft mechanic.
Yeah.
We don't have...
I still don't see that.
Sign my word on it.
You can't. I saw it on the third, on his third page.
Aircraft.
Oh, except in the top where he said, or unfortunately, that was in his work experiences at Amazon and, uh, and, uh, the college, I guess, Tremant College.
He didn't retire from the military. He just was in there four years.
I think he, he put in there, what, his wife was in there?
He was retired. Yeah, she retired from Coast Guard.
He could have manned for years just like that and go home. But if he got a family, from what it's got a family, you know, maybe more.
That's something to consider, yeah.
I, I, I like his drubality and all, but, but I'm gonna tell you, I ain't never went to, I ain't never went to an interview and said, I don't need your job.
Probably still on the chair.
I went, I went with my hat and my hand and hope they hired me.
Maybe.
Okay, we're just, we're just, we agreed to, to put this on the agenda. The other thing we could do is, is advertise again, but...
Think nobody want to work right now? Nobody, sorry.
You know, that first one, I mean, for the freshman, I may be wrong. I've been wrong most from morning to night, so...
Well, he's got six months probation yet.
That's, that's, that's the saving grace.
And they do, everyone, I'm just as good as you could go for that six months. And then after the six month, they fall right and they with everybody else.
So how do you prevent that? That's my thing.
You gotta have somebody to work against.
I think that's what I'm worried about the most.
It's not that we can't, it's not that we can't, it's that we're not. We'll have, we'll have these workshops in three months and everybody come in and say, oh, yeah, doing a good job. Keep it up this season, three months. We never say we're not happy.
Or why we're not happy or what we need to do to make you, make us happy.
Yeah, we, we need to be fair with them. We need to say, I mean, if they're not pleased, they need to hear it. They don't need your offer of truth. They need to hear the most. And then we need to tell them what they can do to, to make it better. You said, who would show either one of these? David said when he left in his letter, he told me personally that he would come out and help anybody and, and all that. He didn't even be available for call out or emergencies or a cease or some things like that. So... And that's, this is too much personal opinion, but that was kind of a bad situation I remember. So if he started out, you couldn't have asked for any, anybody to be much better. But Jimbo was the same way. Uh, even, even had it. We, we had a couple of them and now they had it. Your daddy had to put a finger on it.
Uh, yep, I remember those days.
So what we need to do is these or, or if these don't work out, do whatever we do replace David with. We need to make sure that we're up front with them and that we expect them to do better or do more work. Okay, if you put that on the agenda for next, next Thursday. And these now, we're gonna do the...
We, we need to set a, a time to just go over these, you know, and...
We'll physically hire a man and put him on probation and, you know, and, and with an updated job description. That's...
Yeah.
That's, uh, this is nineteen years old.
I start.
Please do a change.
What we need is change, is change.
Yeah. How do we, how do we need to do this on the job descriptions?
Well, right now, we have to take what we got, right, on these two applications?
Well, I, I think probably we do because that's what we advertised.
Right.
And, uh, but I think Mr. Carter will tell us that, well, we're not union, that you should, that we'll see, that this is, is, these are our, these are our documents. We can change them. They'll always have to come in the line, but, uh, I still think that we could do that. If we're, if we think these, we got outdated things and we got some things that are wrong from here. I think we could, uh, we need to do it, we, we need to maybe present it to them by the time he's off of probation that this is an altered job description.
Yes, at least by then.
Yeah, we can do, we could do that, yeah.
Other municipalities in the county have done that recently.
Arlington, yeah.
Everybody's revamped it.
The boroughs, the boroughs just changed them loads, yeah.
And I, I just came from Vernon and they're going to be redoing theirs, um, I think probably next workshop, so...
They workshop every other week, they just...
Every month.
Every month they workshop.
Yeah.
When's our next workshop?
It won't be till August.
We started...
July, July.
We started...
That's still bigger than six months.
Oh, yeah.
We started in...
I think it's in July, yeah.
Yeah, we started to do the every month and...
Well, mid-February, we should have done, we done it more.
We really, we really wound up not having much to... We're gonna have as big a staff now. Okay, let's, everybody take these with you and over the, over the next, uh, month or six weeks or something like that before we come back and all. Let's have these ready and, uh, he'll be halfway through us, yeah, probation by then. Okay, Ms. Morgan?
All right. Mine is, uh, stuff is planned for. You can take those. This is a lot of information. You can take it with you. I can discuss it with you next week or we can, uh, discuss it now. Um, but it's a lot for y'all to look at that I want y'all to look at and also...
How big is the agenda next week?
It's not, I haven't even got one started yet, so it's not big at all. We got a, end of this few hours. We got a, uh, that, the only thing I really need to, the rest of y'all got it the last meeting most of, you know. Uh, the USDA facilities grant, I got this grant ready to go. But it's come to light that this is a matching grant. Either, uh, if they don't take the firehouse grant as our match, we're gonna have to come up with like thirty-four thousand dollars. But we can also do, and I spoke to Ms. Gavin, I said, in, in order not to draw down the city's cash reserves, we need to do the seventy-five, twenty-five grant, you know, twenty-five percent, uh, loan, seventy-five percent grant. But the fire department is paying off their, their, uh, rescue truck this year. This is the last payment. This payment wouldn't come due till next year. So in the next, it wouldn't come due till after the next budget year. So they could pay this, you know, they're paying twelve thousand dollars. This would be a very little amount of money to pay them. But she's thinking that she's, and that's one reason we hadn't executed these documents yet, rather than sign them yet, is we need, uh, we'll have to have a vote to go on that grant. So that needs to be agenda and that's the only thing that I've got that needs to be agenda for the next meeting.
Do you know, I sure didn't know it cost you to take money until like when you get... So that's, that's, that's not, that's, that's hurting the town really. It didn't come up with something like that, uh, to me, if it caused you that much money.
Well, my thing was saying it was complete and there's no trash there and, and if you ride down there right now, you know...
Yeah, they are, you know.
There's, it charged seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, yeah.
It was eleven hundred.
Fourteen.
Yeah.
It started out fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, great. That's, that's, that's not...
But that, that's all I need to be...
On the, on the thing she's talking about, that's thirty-four thousand dollars we could go.
Thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Uh, and, and again, it's kind of like, it's kind of like the Pausan Paddus. I thought all the time we're gonna have a big red Pausan Paddus down there and then we're gonna have...
I don't know how we're gonna have down there, do you?
We're gonna have a half of, half of red barn or something. I don't know, uh...
When he goes far?
And then we've been told this is gonna be a grant and we come up here, it's time to, it's time to want it and it's, it's, uh...
And she's, she's actually sure, you know, that, uh, uh, we're, they're gonna use the firehouse as a match, you know. But if it don't, we don't wanna sign a paper here that we're gonna commit thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars cash out of our reserves, you know. We wanna stay up. We want a loan on it.
So you're saying that the, that the payback from the fire department is gonna be between now and October or, or in the next budget?
Next budget year.
So it's gonna be in the twenty-two budget year?
Yes.
And then this is starting in the twenty-three budget year?
Yeah.
They say about twenty-five something, probably.
Yeah, thirty-three thousand. That'll be a small payment for USDA. I don't know how many years they're gonna have. I just come in on the, Adam and Sam had been meeting with her and... But to operate, we have to have this, this amount of money from the grant, you know, from USDA to be able to even get into the building. But I just need authorization to agenda it for next week and let y'all look it over.
If we need to discuss it or if we need to take action, I know we need to take action. We need to discuss that. I'll put it on the agenda, but I'm, I'm not pushing paperwork or anything, especially if you continue on her because, because they're gonna pay that, they're gonna pay that off in rather than having twelve thousand dollars now.
Well, how about six?
They're gonna turn around and...
Probably could be six of them.
So we're seeing here, we need transmission and we need some other things like that. But if you keep on keeping your money tied up in loan payments, when you gonna go out, when you gonna fix those things and break down in the meantime?
And that's what we're hoping. She's, she said she was gonna go back to, I talked to her yesterday. She's going back to the state to see if they're gonna for sure take that firehouse grant as match.
Yeah. Will she know before next week?
She should.
I th- I think we have to put it on the agenda.
But Roger just hesitant to sign this application, committing to, and I'm hesitant for him to without a vote.
Okay, you can do it yourself.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take it. The rest of mine, just, you know, it's just what y'all asked for, the delinquency accounts, the, uh, project versus expenditures, um, the firehouse update and, um... Another thing I wanted to ask to the agenda is, uh, Westlaw Electric has approached us about paying our electric bills online because due to the mail system now, they don't get the bills to us in time for us to pay them and they get them by the twenty-fifth. So they're calling their municipalities and governments and asking them to pay online. I told them, I didn't have a call with them. They sent it up, but they would take a vote from the council for me to do that.
What, the lighting system goes down?
It'll be up, uh, sometime another year. I ain't got it...
It won't be down that long?
No, it won't be down that long.
Won't be like the phone system?
I still have it. We took a...
What's going on, Roger?
We took a direct hit here, lightning hit and it knocked Susan's still at, uh... But the thing about it is, West Florida, I don't know, AT&T is setting us up with fiber, you know, because we gotta go from the analog. So, they're not gonna come out and work on these analog phones, but they're supposed to be out next week, the first week, hookups up to the fiber voice, you know, digital, you know. And then Travis said today that if we were on that fiber like that, we can just, they'll just go to radio over there to the firehouse and they can have the internet and the security cameras and all that being linked together with the two buildings, you know. Which I like the idea of being able to view the firehouse from here as well, you know. And one of the cameras is gonna face the front of the town hall here, so we don't know what's going on over here.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'll, I'll-
Lightning, lightning hit my, hit the end of my ribbon, the, the end post ribbon, just knocked a, come down, it was just splintered.
Well, you see there on, uh, TV?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Ma, I was gonna ask you, the phone we have at City Hall is a landline, right?
Correct.
They're on a line, right? And them are, they're coming to an end one day.
They're an end now.
And we'll probably need to go to a wireless office.
Well, we've got the ports, they're porting the numbers over and we can still have our landline, you know, it won't be a landline, it'll be a phone that works, you know, but we can still use it. We got digital phones, how we have to go to digital phone? Yeah, one of our assistant chiefs is on that list, but he won't pay me.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Again?
I think stays on, you know, his momma come pay for it. Was her heart, she's in hospital with pneumonia right now.
The numbers seem to be fewer, but we still have two thousand dollars out there. And we're shutting, we're shutting them off like we've been in shrift.
Except for this month, we haven't, because we ain't got none. I ain't went out and shut none off. I can get Eddie to do it, though. This lady, that first one out there?
Yeah.
She's up in Georgia. I talked to her on the phone. Her granddaughter is being in ICU for like two months now.
Wow.
She said she has not forgotten me, but, and I think she's in Columbus. Somewhere, somewhere up that way, your granddaughter's very ill.
My goodness. And the budget?
Budget is in there. Everything's in budget, you know. There's a couple lineups that y'all already got, I haven't moved yet, but that's the project versus expenditures on there, the fire rig and water.
Is there anything that you need to tell us about? I, I, we already, we're already hour and a half to, we're already two and a half hours into this and if we're gonna take that long next Thursday night, I'd rather do it while I'm here, but if-
No, there's nothing major in there to tell you. I printed out some stuff for y'all to look at. We often know everything's going on and being going on and doing going on.
And next Thursday night, we can highlight it.
I'll highlight it for you.
Is that okay with y'all? She, I think she needs to make the report and tell us what we're looking at sometimes, but we are-
It's our job to go through.
Yes, sir.
It is, it is.
And before y'all get to clean banks, that's-
One other thing I do want to tell you before we leave, uh, just in a local agreement versus code information. Now, we, we passed these-
That hard that's standing there like?
Because people standing out here and one thing or another and all like that. I agree, it sounds like a lot of money for us, but, but we need to be sure as we go forward that we want the town cleaned up and we want the- She said somebody would have trouble, they, they need to live in their travel trailer. They didn't want to be there. She gave them the permit that they're, that they're eligible to get, all the house has been built. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with your children, grandchildren coming down and working in your yard for a couple weeks vacation, something like that, but when it's not tied down, when it's, don't have a safety tank, when it doesn't have running water, when it's, doesn't have its own power source and things like that, I think that's violation of laws of codes. And one time, we got sued and the judge said, who better to obey the law than them to make it? So, if we've got ordinances and things like that, my opinion is we need to probably follow through with them.
Well, that's true. You know, you ain't ever used to have them if you don't, you know, but I just didn't know it cost you that much money to get them.
John, I'm gonna tell you, I don't, I don't, I didn't know that either. I, I was surprised at that. And I'm sure I'll talk them to council that license was done.
Yeah, last year, nineteen, or nineteen.
I don't remember and then looked for agreement. I do remember the ordinance. I don't know and then looked for agreement, but it says, and, and if I didn't read it, that's on me. But it says it will figure out a, a charge based on the population of the city divided by the population of county, which is like zero, two percent. It's, it's nothing, nothing moving. And that's a two thousand and ten instance, so it's probably wanting to go up a little bit now.
Well, you know, I ain't know you could have an ordinance if you don't.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of, it is what it is.
Yeah, it is what it is.
Same words I was saying, it is what it is. My same face, sir.
You won't leave us?
No.
I don't either. I don't know why he threw it at me, but-
That's the way he's purging. What even made it to-
Why happened there?
He swore to us over and over that he's checked everything, called her in the house. His mama said they got, they do have a toilet.
But they know how to jiggle it.
But they know how to jiggle it, make it.
Dwayne swears it.
I don't, I don't think that's what made his bill so big. I think it's gonna be this.
I went down there and he had dug it out, because he called me and I was down there at the game and I said, I'll be there in a minute. And where David went down there and put the new meter reading, uh, in, on this side of it is a cutoff valve. On this side going toward the house is where that piece and another piece went together. And it was like dropping like that. So, he took the shovel, because I mean, it was just pouring water when it was like that. So, he'd take the shovel and lift it up and when he'd lift it up, it would just barely drip. So, it's, it, what it done, them two pieces come undone and that, where the, I guess, the male and female, they call it?
Inside our box.
They glued it together and that's where it was broken at.
No, wasn't our fault. It was inside our box.
It was inside the box.
Whether it was our fault, I can't say, don't know.
Well, I went down there, I went down there after the piece was put in, the meter reading piece, because I didn't recognize what it was. I had to call Martin. And all I used to the needle and the hole, the holes now, but it was not wet. That was two, two weeks at least before he found this and he said now that it was wet all inside the box, so much he found it wet the box.
And also Dawn Boo, my neighbor?
Yeah.
Eve, he showed up right on IDA.
Yeah, and probably what happened is it was leaking and then, then it broke. And it, it was kind of like this and then he lifted it to that shovel and it was like that and then-
Right.
Keep on running, so, I mean, it, it may have been hard to find.
What, what, what type of bill he told him?
Hundred twenty-five dollars.
A hundred twenty-five dollars?
That, that's on his side of that cutoff valve, right?
Right, right. Yeah, because I went out and-
He said his contention is, that's in our position, his contention is that our maintenance man caused it. Do I think that? No, it don't. I think it was just something, you know, that, um, it's under a bush there and I'm sure the roots of that bush is pushed up and down on that pipe, you know, growing and it's under like a garden bush, something like that. And those roots, you know, have, I don't know. I can't say, but I, do I think it's David's fault? No, it don't.
No. And it was, it was on that side.
And if the leak, if the leak started, if it's gonna be David's fault, we gotta back it up to see where it started because apparently they found the leak or the bill was something and I had before David went in and David's first trip was to replace them.
Four months in a row, I have put a leak. If you get a bill from me and it says a leak on it, it's got, you got a leak. Four months in a row, I had done that and he stuck there everywhere. He said, no, no, no leak, you know, been everywhere. If, if he's been under that house, I could probably get under that house, you know. That house, he could fall to the ground.
I ain't trying to say that, but I have to tell you.
I can go in that house and he can-
I ain't doing that, but, yeah.
Yes, please. He's more than our house than our house. I can assure you. He also said he didn't have there. I asked him specifically, do you have a toilet that you have to jiggle it out of? No, ma'am, we ain't got nothing. Then Ms. Grace, she calls me and said, we gotta come out, I said, Ms. Grace, you gotta come over or anything like this? Yeah, but we all know to jiggle it when we get through.
What, what?
I hope he prays for me down there tonight.
What, what, what's this going to be?
His normal bill is a minimum bill, fifty-three, sixty.
Fifty-three, and it's a hundred twenty-five.
Just a one.
That's been going on for four months.
No, his bill just been going up a little bit at a time, not much over, because they didn't, they don't, they don't use a lot of water now. They use a little bit more since Will's there, but not a lot of water, you know, Ms. Grace, probably don't.
And probably it's going up because this is getting bigger and bigger.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Are we adjourned?
I hope so.